A few announcements. I'd like to send congratulations to Ernie Esposito for receiving the 2010 Presidential Special Service Award at the MBCA Hall of Fame banquet on November 21st. Ernie is the Chair of the School Committee and has been a mainstay in Uxbridge Athletic Programs for over forty years. Congratulations to Ernie for that. Another reminder is that the Angel of Hope Candlelight Vigil will be held a week from tonight on Monday, December 6th at 7:00 PM. And as a result, we are moving our next meeting to Tuesday, December 7th, so we can attend that. And the final announcement is there was a server upgrade that was happening within the Town Hall, and as a result, some Town Hall employees, as well as committee and board members, are not able to receive their email. If anyone is trying to contact anyone within Town Hall, please call us directly. Our phones are, and all of our phone numbers are listed on the Town website, and if you're unable to reach us, then please give the Town Manager a call. That's it for announcements. Citizens' forum? Do you have any for citizens' forum? Mike?
Do you have some handouts? Do you want me to do the handouts, just small ones?
My question, is this something that you're looking for us to take action on at this point?
No, nope, something else.
Alright. Thank you.
Thank you.
And just a reminder that, you know, we have limited time for this.
Yeah, three minutes or so.
Okay.
I already prepared a little speech.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Michael Burrell from West Street in Uxbridge. I have something that is critical and imperative that all of you carefully listen to. Just sit back and listen, and I have a few questions towards the end. The faster I can read this without interruption, the faster I will be done. Hopefully, it should be about three minutes or less. Respectfully request that from the Chair and Vice Chair. Thank you. I'm here tonight because after watching last Monday's Selectman's meeting, I was upset by what I observed. I seem to have read some of your individual facial expressions, and it is time to talk about this matter related to tonight's agenda, Old Business Board Reorganization. Selectman Carrie K. Robertson has some dark secrets from the past that factually display her performance as questionable. What bothers me is Ms. Robertson now wants to reorganize your board to allegedly become Chairman to take control. Here is why she should never ever be Chairman or Vice Chairman. You have in front of you Monday, November 17, 2008, Executive Session, original meeting minutes taken by you, Carrie Robertson. When I initially requested these original minutes, I was told that they were missing from Town records and could not be located. A few days later, they were located and found in Jill Myers' desk drawer, hence not together with the other meeting records. Selectman Carrie K. Robertson is a Board of Selectmen Town official. She and the Town are both equally responsible for complying with mass general laws on taking accurate and complete meeting minutes of all executive sessions, which included the one with Police Chief Scott J. Freitas complaints. She wrote the minutes on white copy paper using pencil, a total of three pages for this two-hour executive session. The top side of what you have in front of you is I tracing over Carrie's handwritten handwriting, as your records could not be darkened up anymore, never mind readable. I was read aloud, word to word, to me what the documents even said. The Town should be ashamed of itself when she's proving her meeting minutes and record-keeping skills or lack of are inexcusable and totally unacceptable. I am going to read her your meeting minutes out loud, so the citizens in Uxbridge Police Officers watching at home now have a fair understanding of what really happened in the second executive session.
Excuse me, Mr. Burrell, actually, it's, since you've provided this to us, this is now going to be available to the public to receive this, and in keeping in a timely manner. It's something that people can come in and request. I don't think that it's necessary, respectfully, for you to be reading them out loud. Okay? Is there anything further that you'd like to add?
Okay, well, in that case, I'd like to finish reading the rest of this.
But not the things that you handed out to us?
Right, correct. No, I understand. Thank you. No problem. Thanks. I have a few, three quick questions for Mr. Desalitz, if that's okay?
Sure.
Yes or no, in the second executive session, you witnessed Carrie K. Robertson taking notes. Yes or no?
Yes.
Yes or no, during the second executive session, were Freitas Ostrowski, Jill Myers, or others questioned by the Board of Selectmen staff as a board or individuals? Yes or no?
Say that again?
I'm sorry. Yeah. Yes, during the exec, second executive session of these notes here, were Freitas Ostrowski, Jill Myers, or others questioned by the Board of Selectmen staff as a board or as individuals? Yes or no?
At this point, I think that this really is an agenda item. Is it something that you're looking for specific answers from the Vice Chair?
No.
Well, you are. You're asking him for yes or no questions, and I'm also just being vigilant as to the time, so it is taking a little more than three minutes.
Well, if you want, I can, I can finish reading this. It'd take less than a minute.
If, but please just, you know, pass over the questions that you have directly for Mr. Desalitz, and if you'd like to be put on the agenda to, in order to be able to direct those to him, you know, we can certainly, you know, the paperwork in order to do that to be put on a meeting.
Okay, let's, let's make it perfectly clear that Selectman Robinson was the clerk at that time.
Okay.
So that answers all the questions you have.
Oh, okay. Absolutely. Thank you.
I'm, I'm a little confused. When did we prevent people from asking questions of individual board members? Is there something new? Did I miss something?
What I'm trying to, to focus the, the board on is the fact that this sounds to me like it's something that should be an agenda item, as opposed to just citizens' forum, if there are very specific questions that he has.
I don't see anything that calls for an agenda item. He's not asking for an agenda item.
You can still ask whatever you want.
Apparently, notes taken, you know, and, and minutes are a record of action taken. And all I see is, at the end of it, you know, it looks as though action was taken, that there was no denial of whatever it was.
Okay. The, the reason that I also mention it, though, is to keep us sort of on schedule and keep our meetings to a reasonable hour. If, if the Board agrees, then we can go ahead and let Mr. Burrell finish.
That part I agree, I agree with, but the gentleman hasn't spoken for more than two minutes.
Yes, he has, actually, because he started at 7:05. He's been speaking for four minutes so far. So, I just...
So you understand where I'm coming from, Mr. Burrell?
Oh, absolutely.
She was the clerk at the time.
Yes, I understand. Yes, she was the clerk at the time, correct.
Took the notes.
Yep.
Is, you know, I...
Right, exactly, yeah.
I guess that's the answer to all your questions.
Yep, yep. That's right. I only have one more question.
Okay, go ahead.
So skip all that.
No, go ahead. If you want to ask a question, I'll answer it. I don't have any problem. Go ahead.
All right. If it's okay with you.
No, it's fine.
The last question was, yes or no, during the second executive session, Uxbridge Police Officer Peter Emmerich provided verbal testimony speaking at the meeting. Yes or no?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Thank you. Okay, in conclusion to my speech, number one, Carrie's original handwritten minutes, which you have there in front of you, versus the typed version, which is this version over here, are not the same. The public release version, which is the one that's typed, with your signatures, does not match the original meeting minutes taken by Ms. Robertson at all. Number two, Carrie's original minutes demonstrate the following. In this case, since I always appreciate if Bruce was able to answer the questions, since Bruce answered those three questions regarding, which was the citizens' complaint back then, if you read Carrie's meeting minutes, the investigative questions and the accused responses of that investigation are nonexistent and left out of Town public records. You have the records right in front of you, and basically, you can see that there's no question, there's no answers of anything. Number three, Uxbridge Police Officer Peter Emmerich did attend, and also been confirmed to me that he did provide verbal testimony of him speaking at the second executive session. Again, Carrie's meeting minutes display nothing about Emmerich ever saying a word. Number four, Chairman Kevin Karros recused himself from voting, and Vice Chairman Michael Potasky was assigned acting chairperson for the executive session. Ms. Robertson, the Board's own records knowingly, knowingly show two sets of votes, each four to zero in favor of tossing out the individual complaints. Selectman Bagdad Zarian was not present that day. Mr. Karros already recused himself, so as your minutes demonstrate, how can Selectman Robertson record votes four to zero, you ask? You, Ms. Robertson, obviously counted Selectman Bagdad Zarian's vote, even though he wasn't even there. You suckered Mr. Bagdad Zarian into your little mess of lies and deceit of deceiving the public. How fraudulent and careless is that? None of the Carrie's meeting minutes mentioned a word about Wendy White, Animal Control Officer Joyce Garry, or even Jill Myers. The public release version with the signatures clearly shows Wendy White's citizens' complaint being tossed out by the Board of Selectmen, but there's nothing in the original meeting minutes to support this. There were also no original meeting minutes of the two Jill Myers complaints in Carrie Robertson's notes. Ms. Robertson, where is Jill Myers' testimony? There is absolutely nothing in your own minutes. As a matter of fact, the Town Records proved the Board, which was Kevin Karros, Mike Potasky, Carrie K. Robertson, and Bruce Desalitz, never ever discussed the Mike Burrell-Freitas complaint, ever. Ms. Robertson's minutes show there was discussion about my previous fire department records requests, but absolutely nothing in your minutes about my initial Freitas complaint. In closing, your own board member, who was part of your own team, screwed up your meeting minutes, hence making the Town's records and file a big fat lie of deception, and you, Ms. Robertson, never recorded one bit of testimony from anyone that was present, and the Town is to blame for letting this happen. So who is willing to step up and accept the blame? The public release signed version right here, since the document was based upon the original lackadaisical minutes, furthermore, this does not even match the original minutes, as I said earlier. So we have three different versions of what supposedly happened from two executive sessions that took place in 2008. Now that Selectman Carrie K. Robertson's blunder has been, finally been made public, the executive sessions are all a lie to deceive the public, and then what, why any of you wants her in charge as Chair or Vice Chair? She should be ashamed of herself what she did in your own records, ladies and gentlemen, in my opinion. She should not even be on the Board anymore, and I certainly could agree with other citizens. It's time for her to make right and resign off the Board. I strongly urge the Board to vote against a reorganization of the Board idea, which will be in a little bit. I'm sure none of you want to be known for being dragged down by her blunders and Town official screw-ups. At the last meeting for you, Ms. Robertson, to publicly preach to Selectman Cahill about being sure that he takes accurate minutes, as well as tracking attachments a few meetings ago...
Excuse me, Mr. Burrell?
Yes.
Sorry, excuse me. Are you near finished?
I just got two sentences left.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You spoke that you had trouble finding Board of Selectmen meeting attachments in the Chow Smith sign manner. How about waking up to a reality check and how it feels to be on the losing end? What you did to me. I am the one suffering for your mistakes. I thank the Board for your time, understanding, and I appreciate the patience of Chairman Pittman and Vice Chair Bruce Desalitz. Thank you.
Mr. Burrell?
Yes.
Your cover sheet?
Yes.
Correctly characterizes the, what the sheets attach as executive session notes, yet you refer to them verbally?
Yeah.
Throughout as original minutes. These things are not minutes. They're notes taken by someone who's supposed to keep track, keep a record of action taken?
Right.
By the Board. Not a verbatim transcript, not a detailed synopsis of what was said. Minutes are a record of action taken.
Motions are...
But those are the original notes that were taken.
Notes, yeah.
I don't understand the difference between notes and minutes.
But you keep referring to them as original minutes, and then comparing them to the minutes that are voted on finally, which are the minutes.
Yes. But what I'm saying, and I already discussed this with the Attorney General's Office, is normally the original notes would be this, which is correct, and then normally you would take the, or the meeting minutes, whatever the exact term is. You would take this doc, this information and put it into the typed version. This is actually backwards. It turns out this, which is the typed version, has more information, votes, comments, stuff, than this version. This one should have the most information of who said what, and if you look at the original executive session...
Mr. Burrell, you're incorrect. According to open meeting law, going back to, I believe this was, what, nineteen eight, 2008 or 2009? 2008. The only thing that was required under open meeting law at that time was to record the motions. What I provided when you asked for records is I was the only member of the Board that provided my personal notes. That's why there's not a direct correlation between the two. I was not, these notes do not encompass everything that I was doing for the Board as far as the minutes. I also was using from memory for minutes on some of those things. They were never intended to be an exact mirror of the two.
Well, how could that be correct? Because...
What? The only thing I was required, excuse me, the only thing I was, you've already spoken. The only thing that I was required to take for the Board was the motions, which on the paper you would see. And the Board, if there was any errors in any of my notes when it was transcribed, I believe by Kim Hood at the time, to the actual minutes, the Board would not have officially signed off on those minutes. Those, those minutes represent what the Board then says took place in that executive session.
Right, but what you're, right, what I'm saying is that the typed version has more information of what happened?
Yes, it does.
Than this. So why isn't it documented in the original ones? I have Kim Hood's notes...
Because, as I said to you, those notes, there were other people that were present. There was more information that went into the minutes than just besides my notes. I was only required, as the clerk, to take the motion, and that's why that information was provided to you. Other things on that piece of paper, it's not into the minutes because that was my personal notes. I was taking it on the same piece of paper. And I also, it doesn't matter if I, it doesn't matter what I used to write with. There's no requirement that says I had to use pen. So I'm not quite sure what your intent was with pencil.
Well, I have, I have all the original notes. I have everything, everything of original, which is basically the Kim, the Kim Hood document and your documents. So how could there be additional documents if I have everything? Because you said there's additional documents to yours. There isn't.
No, what I'm saying is there's additional information. If the minutes are, have more information that was there...
But I already have, I have everything.
It's not, it's not unusual, when we look over the minutes to approve them, that one or more of us will remember something from memory that's at variance with what are on the, the draft minutes, and will say, no, I don't remember saying that. I said such and such, and say, yes, I agree. I remember that too, and will change it. I mean, there's nothing sinister that jumps out here.
Incidentally, those notes are not, although you, you, you brought those forward, you disclosed those notes.
My personal notes.
Those are not public records.
No, they're not. I was being nice and providing them. I was not required.
If you take notes for your own use as a selectman?
Yeah.
And take them home and don't show them to anyone else, those aren't public records.
Yes.
Right, when you asked for the records request, I just provided you my personal notes. I didn't have to do that, Mr. Burrell. I had nothing to hide.
Right, no, I understand. So that means that there's no...
Well, no, you're alleging that I did, and I had nothing to hide.
But there's no other documents. If I didn't get any documents, there's absolutely nothing. The only thing that existed, whoops, the only thing that existed was the typed copy, which Jill Myers typed.
And I don't have to take notes in order to record the minutes of the meeting.
Yes, but you have to record the votes, which you did in that documentation, the master...
Exactly, and that's what's there, right, which then matches with the minutes. So there, I don't understand what you're alleging.
But how, but how, how could there have been an executive session where investigative questions and answer was, Officer Emmerich gave testimony that was relative to the investigation, and none of that is documented anywhere?
We weren't required, we were not required to keep record of any of that.
So you're telling me the Town's not required to keep documentation of anything?
According to open meeting law, we were only required to keep record of what motions were taken during that meeting. That was it. Now, whether or not other board members took notes then, I don't know, but I provided you everything that I had. And, and again, as the Town Manager told you, I did not even have to give you the additional information that I took that evening. But I wasn't hiding anything, so I'd appreciate an apology from you for alleging that I was doing something sinister, because there was nothing sinister in my actions that evening. If anything, I gave you more information than I was supposed to, required to, had to.
Well, I'm gonna think about that.
Okay. You know, Mr. Burrell, there's...
I'm not offering you an apology now.
Okay. Well, I think it's something you should have said, because some of the things you said tonight could be viewed as slanderous.
That's quite, that's quite different, what you said about me on the orange board, so.
Well...
And I'm not gonna get into that. I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for...
Thank you very much again. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. So we're a little over so far, but go on.
I'll try to be brief.
Thank you.
Jason Gasham, 45, Guine Street, Davis Heights. Good evening. Back on November 8th, the Board of Selectmen voted against a winter waiver requested by the residents of Davis Heights Development. Since that meeting has come to our attention, that the Cedar Woods Development has in fact been given a, a waiver by the Board of Selectmen for their upcoming winter season, and additionally, if I understood correctly, two other streets have been given some type of consideration at this, at this point as well. Given the circumstances surrounding the Davis Heights Development, we're asking for reconsideration this evening, that we be given the 2010, 2011 winter season waiver by the Board of Selectmen this evening. At a meeting on Sunday, November 21st, the residents of Davis Heights all gathered and unanimously decided to hire Landon Hammer of Whitemanville to work through the legal and logistical issues with both the deeds and other paperwork for the official acceptance that we hope to be submitting on the May 10th spring meeting. In addition, just a couple of things I'd point out that haven't been previously noted. Allison Burnham of 16 Lee Street has spent the past couple of years working with the Town Manager's Office to try to get this waiver approved, given the very difficult time we've had with the developer, Marinella, in getting seasonal, each year getting the maintenance taken care of. Also, Tracy, here in the Town Manager's Office, does have all of the waivers signed by all the residents in the development. The Planning Board has approved the road, I'm sure, as you're aware, and has also, excuse me, has, they approved the road during their October 26th meeting, and has recommended to the Board of Selectmen that they approve the winter waiver. Has also been noted by the Planning Board and other Town officials that both Glen and Lee Street are two of the best roads in the Town, and that the Department of Public Works would have no issue at all, both plowing and sanding those roads. Just as a wrap-up, you know, given the timing of the Planning Board approval, really, we didn't have adequate time within those couple of weeks before the fall meeting to get our documentation straightened out and ready for acceptance this year. In addition, with Northern Development being bankrupt, and also, not just being bankrupt, but not being willing to handle the acceptance, now the acceptance comes down to the residents in that development, we have engaged Landon Hammer to the tune of $5,000, that all of the ten houses up there currently are sharing across the board, $500 each. And, you know, not only that, but the physical and financial ramifications of handling the acceptance. It's gonna be a burden on all of us as well. So we're just asking for some help here. You know, we really do need a little bit of assistance this winter. Everybody's already paid out $500. I'm concerned that if I have to go back as the chosen chairperson to see this process forward for the development, that if I have to go back to, you know, all the residents and say, I know you've already kicked them $500, but now I need another six to $800 to get a plow in for the winter, I have a feeling there's gonna be a few people that just aren't gonna be able to come up with it, and it's gonna put us in a really very difficult situation. So, just like to note as well, there are six people here from the development this evening. Jim Olet from 36 Glen, Dan Varga from 35 Glen, Jim Menjus from 19 Lee, Allison Burnham from 16 Lee, and Michael and Crystal Cordlessa from 15 Lee, who are here to support this motion as well. You know, kind of the bottom line, I guess, is that we're doing everything we can right now to take some responsibility ourselves, financially, time-wise. We've hired the attorney. We want to be on the spring docket for the full acceptance to get it to be a public way, and, you know, we want to be a partner with the Town to get this process done, you know, and we just want to see it through as easily as possible. So we'd appreciate your consideration.
Okay. One question I'd like to ask the Board, since this is not an agenda item, but we had made the exception last week with Cassie Lane in voting to go ahead with the winter maintenance. Do we want to make a decision now, or push it until December 7th? Not with Cassie, with, and make it an official agenda item?
Why don't we just say right now, until December 7th, if anything comes up?
The same as we did, right.
Between, yeah, same as we did with...
And we do have all the waivers from the residents?
We do, yes.
The liability?
I believe we do, yes.
So, again, the directive for the Town Manager that if there is any inclement weather between now and December 7th, that you will be plowed, and you'll be on the agenda for December 7th for us to make an official decision.
Well, I'm not sure we can issue a directive to the Town Manager.
Well, but we can't do a motion.
And I know that.
So, what else?
So, I mean...
Give me another, give me another word, Peter.
He can take it upon himself.
Okay, all right. Give me another word. We used directive last week, so...
Don't use, well, don't use either one. He can take it upon himself.
I spoke to Ben today. He has his contractors lined up, lined up, and he's currently working on the roots. I told him to be, to plan on plowing the ones you discussed before, and to be prepared for contingencies as far as, as some of the others that were discussed. So I think he'll be okay to do that. But, you know, like anything else, it's more resources, but...
And you are correct when you say Davis Heights is in pretty good shape. I've been up there several times.
It's a brand-new road.
Yeah.
Looks fantastic, but just, just make sure your lawyer's here the 7th, or, you know, make sure you have to get the paperwork done, so for spring acceptance.
Well, yeah, so we have our first meeting with the attorney tomorrow.
Okay.
We've already got all the deeds together. We've got the plans together. You know, we are fast-tracking this situation, you know, to be ready for the spring. So, you know, the only reason I say that is, you know, we're not looking to just try to come back every year. I mean, our goal is to finish this thing.
We appreciate that.
Get it done. Let's put it to bed.
That's what we wanted you to.
Yeah, I mean, we're on the same page, and, you know, that's why, you know, if we can get the Town's help this winter, it's gonna go a long, long way for everybody up in that development. It really will. One more item, you know, we were talking about the plans, and I guess I'm just looking for some direction, and possibly some assistance. You know, the Planning Board approved the development without an actual final review of the plans from Heritage Design. There was a 14-item list from Gray's Engineering of things that needed to be changed on the ass built. During that meeting on, I apologize, I don't have the actual date, but when they approved that, I believe it was October 26th, they made the approval. They had not reviewed the plans. It was gonna be, they were gonna review the plans. Heritage was gonna get the plans up to them for review, and so on and so forth. To this day, we have not heard back from Ben Sherman, if he has any further changes that need to take place. Is it stamp of approval, you're done, no further issue, moving forward towards acceptance? And the problem is that now that we've engaged the attorney and we're trying to fast-track this thing, we can't do anything until we have those plans. So it's like, we're trying to move as fast as we can, but we're hitting some roadblocks. And again, we, we want to work with the Town, and any direction you can give us, how do we get this going quickly? Secondary to that is that the bond's gonna be released within the next couple of weeks, and if those plans, if Ben comes back and says, well, wait a second, I've got an issue with this basin, I've got an issue with the way this was drawn, and now we're, you know, T minus three or four days, and the bond, from my understanding, is going one way or the other, how do we deal with that? I mean, how are we gonna all of a sudden say, wait a second, there's a problem with the plans, we have to go back again, and then we don't have any bond money?
Mike, can we get with Ben?
I will speak to Ben on this, but frankly, I didn't want to raise the bond, and I had a number of conversations with the Planning Board because of these outstanding issues, particularly the, the legal issues more than the, the physical issues. And I asked Ben if there was, was a issue with the, an engineering issue that would justify holding the bond, and he didn't really have anything for me. So I don't think there are any, any problems with that. I will speak to him. I should see him on Wednesday. The bond will not go out until I sign the warrant.
Okay.
So I will definitely speak to him before that warrant is signed for the release of the bond.
Right. Yeah, I mean, you know, just only because we haven't actually seen the final plans with the adjustments per Gray's report, you know, we just don't, and we're not engineers, so, no. One last final item, I promise. Is the road by the Town considered a private road at this point in time, after this is...
Yes.
Being that it is considered a private road, who is responsible for the insurance on that road?
Insurance?
What kind of insurance?
Well, I mean, like, if so... Well, I mean, like, if somebody comes and rolls their car over on it and bangs himself up, it's a private way, and it's not protected by the town, correct? So, who is responsible for that liability?
Whoever owns the road.
Okay, so, is it?
So, since it's owned some by the residents and some by?
That's, this is, this is the question.
Where they roll over?
Who is the owner?
Where they rolled over. They roll over in front of your house and you own to the center line?
Push it over the line.
Your property. Put it on your neighbor's side.
That's why, that's why you got to get this lawyer, get this one.
No, I know, but in the meantime, you know, we have to protect ourselves, and, and.
I would suggest you, I don't, I don't want to give you illegal advice, but I think you should talk to Attorney Lane.
Yeah. And that's on our list of things.
You may discuss with him posting, posting signage at the entrance to the street.
Travel at your own risk?
Okay.
Yeah, but it already says private way.
Private way.
It's already marked private way, correct?
No.
This one isn't marked private way?
It's actually on the plans as a public, as a public road.
No, 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 the little sign.
There is no, there is no private way sign on it.
Okay, that should have been posted, but I'll find out why it wasn't, and it.
Okay, so, so technically speaking, it is considered a private way?
Yes.
And it is owned by, I guess at this point, all the residents and plus the bankrupt Northern Development? Okay. All right, so, as far as who has the right to give right-of-way on this private road now, with Northern being bankrupt and not accepting responsibility for the acceptance of the road, that comes down to the residents, correct?
Right.
Well, except for the portion of the road that, that Northern Development owns, they're going to have to sign that over to the town.
Right.
Okay.
They own lots?
Right.
Well, they own one more lot.
Okay, so.
At the end of the cul-de-sac. I'm, I'm.
Attorney Lane should be pretty familiar with.
No, yeah, no, no, I, I, I'm, I'm asking what's some recent activity on the road that's taken place, and it was brought up by one of the residents today, and it's a reasonable understanding that if these guys are out there parking their cars on the road and going hunting, and it's on us,
Yes.
we have the right to say no.
Yeah, make a phone call.
Make a call.
That's what we wanted to know.
Yeah.
Thank you very much for seeing us seven. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming out.
Anyone else for Citizens Forum? Going, going, gone? No, okay. All right. Next agenda item we have is meeting minutes approval for eleven twenty-two. We need to approve this tonight in order to complete the project funding.
So, you guys have some changes. I'm going to make them on the master.
Specifically, it says, sir, you approved the project funding agreement last week. Along with that project funding agreement, we have to give a set of certified minutes showing that you've made the vote to approve it.
So, these types of minutes have to be approved as well?
Do we need certified copies about which one into office?
You approved it last week. These, now you're approving the minutes showing you approved it, which I will have certified by.
We need certified copies of the fact that Uxbridge is a town in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, a political subdivision. Do we need copies of our birth certificates or immigration papers?
Only if it costs more money.
We have, we already have that stuff on file.
Peter, you had some changes to these minutes, or there's a number of type posts in here?
I think I came in, as you guys were discussing, was within three.
Right. Yes.
I don't think we changed that.
New business three, Carrie?
Well, this was.
The big one that I read from David.
Right, about the bonds.
New business three, yes. Because if you read, it says, the motion by Robertson, the board moved at the sale of the twenty million general obligations, and skip all the way down to.
The board doesn't, the board doesn't move. Mr. Robertson moved.
Moved that.
The sale of the general obligation bond. Boards don't move. Members make a motion.
So, you made the motion that the board approved the sale of the twenty million dollar general obligation.
I agree, but what David had given us wasn't accurate for what we needed.
So, that was where we were going through when you walked in and saying that we can't make the movements, we're approving them.
And instead of all these sentences, they should just be commas, and then, and further that.
Right.
So, has someone mocked up?
I have a look at it, too.
Version that we can grammatically.
But I, okay, but can we change that motion? Because that's what we read and approved, even though we weren't.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
As amended.
Doesn't change the action.
Right.
Makes it.
Subsequent sentence.
The changes we discussed, you have them all in one document?
Yes, yes. Did anyone notice anything else need to be changed in the?
All business on B. After eleven twenty-seven seventy, comma, and furthermore, is that any restricted, restriction placed on the use of funds?
Jay, I have that one on here, too.
Okay, good.
And then we adjusted the seconding of new business number two. Right, so Jay, you seconded that one?
Correct.
Anything else?
New business, did you, did you know who seconded?
Yeah, we fixed that one. Jay actually did the second.
Yeah, I did the second.
Is there anything else? I'm entertaining a motion to approve as amended.
So moved.
Will they do some favor? Oh, sorry. Will they do some favor?
Aye.
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 Would second first?
Okay, old business. Actually, I'm sorry. Let's move to discuss amendment six. If David is here.
I don't know with the server or email issues, who did get what, but I had sent, as requested, my best version of this on Friday. And today I sent the signed version, which I have three copies with me, if you get to the point where you're willing to sign it.
Are they original copies?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, great.
Well, the originals, they are, to be honest, scanned originals, where it's genes scan them and send them to me, but that's almost always what we present. I can certainly, at this point, frankly, within a day to get scanned true originals handed from the three different or four different parties involved, which are Andrews, BSC, and Raymond Design, is almost physically impossible. But if you wish us to circulate and have that resent you, we can. In the past, we've often used scanned originals.
Well, it's really best eventually to get some live signatures.
Okay, I can certainly, I ask.
Short-term to get this done, sign, sign the scanned ones, but.
I can certainly have him, you know, there's no resistance to it, you understand? It's just physically shipping, you know.
Yeah.
I understand that, obviously, the time limits of this as well.
What I often get is, you know, four sets where on one piece of paper, I have one person, another piece, another, but to get them on the same piece takes time. This, this schedule did not. In fact, frankly, that's why we had talked about the process of not trying to necessarily rush the paperwork, but trying to rush the approval and follow with the paperwork. The rushed paperwork and the rushed meetings do lead to some.
This is something that needs to be rushed.
Can we see what you have? Because I saw the emails on, who was the last set of emails?
Stay maybe, where we're still.
Stay maybe was the last, yeah.
Two now, and I'm holding one just to ask a question, so I can make sure I, I'm going to attack this paper.
I know, I just.
I mean, I'm happy to speak to this. I don't know if there are specific questions or if everyone is comfortable with what the intent of this is.
I just, I just wish we had caught it soon. That's the answer.
Yeah, we all.
I have a question.
Yes.
About the substance.
Yes.
Because when I read that email from the SBA or whoever, yeah, from the.
KAL?
Yeah. All of us sitting here, except for Jay, were on the board when, it was a national grid now, it used to be Mass Electric, told us they're going to extend, you know, another power line on their existing right-of-way and so forth, and they're going to take three years to do the archaeological studies and so on and so forth. Prior to that, when Billy Hood was doing his project, he had to do all those things. So, what I don't understand frankly, is how all of a sudden, this comes up because no one had thought of it. And these are routine things. Yet, we have all these people, very, very smart people and knowledgeable, but yet, time after time, these things, oh, 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 we have to hurry up and do this, it's an emergency. This should, one would have thought, this would have been done a long time ago. I, I found out a few weeks ago that, that we have a design for the, a sewer line that was done without talking to the DPW. I mean, I, I don't know how these things happen.
With respect to, is there a question there, or are you?
How, how is it? How is it that, that people who we are told are very familiar with building schools of this type, and they're very knowledgeable and experienced and qualified, none of which I, I doubt, that aren't aware in advance, gee, I wonder if we have to do this archaeological study, this environmental study, and so on and so forth? And then at the last minute, we're told we have to hurry, hurry, an emergency, we have to get done quickly because otherwise we'll be delayed three years.
Peter, I don't believe necessarily that there's one, one source of blame for this. There was a meeting with MIPA on November ninth that I attended, and the Town Manager did as well. And there were discussions brought up then. There was also an individual from the Army Corps of Engineers, and they had talked about when they were putting a bike path in, that they had to make an adjustment for that as well, because there were arrowheads that were found. So, I feel that there isn't, they could have very well also said to us at that point, why haven't you done something, or should you be doing something? You know, the Army Corps of Engineers, the MIPA individuals. I don't personally feel that, that there's one individual that, or one, or one organization.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying it's one individual.
Or one organization that's.
There are lots of individuals. We have a building committee, we have architects and schmuckitects and engineers and designers and, and everything.
But I feel like you're focusing it strictly on.
Because he's here.
The school build. I know, I understand that. I understand that. I'm trying to educate you on.
Everybody else involved, I mean, you too.
I'm trying to educate you on something that occurred, you know, three weeks ago, where it also could have been brought to our attention of, you know, hey, maybe you guys need to.
But it was brought to our attention last year, though. I mean, correct me, Don, you were in those rooms. I mean, this came up when we were meeting with Catherine Craven in those meetings, which had.
This, this, we've been aware of this possibility.
We've been around for over a year.
We were aware of this, Peter, when I sat on the board with you when we purchased the land in two thousand six, when, when Powell was doing a study on the bike path and found two substantial sites down there.
Okay.
So, we have been alerted all along that this is a possibility, but we will not know until we go through the permitting process. And that's when, that's what we're in, and that's when we've been alerted to it, in finalizing the permit. The questions were also asked about the Rosenfeld property, the Wellfield property, that we acquired, and did that not fall under that? Apparently, at that time, it went through and wasn't required, although, according to the letter, that, you know, the Mass Historical would like that reviewed again. So, I don't know what's going to happen there. As far as the sewer line, I can assure you that the DPW's been aware of the sewer line every step of the way, so I'll contest what, what you said. We've been down there multiple times with multiple scenarios on that sewer line, and pumping stations, and working with the DPW Superintendent on preferences and long-term impacts it may have on his staff, his department, on the town of Uxbridge, trunk lines for tying in, future development down Quaker Highway, what's best for the town. He's been completely in the loop on, on all of these things. So, we've had four or five designs on that sewer line, and then going through, you know, Conservation Commission, and their, you know, permitting and overview, seeing what wetland mitigation, grade changes, all of that.
If, if this architectural business was a possibility, as you say, some time ago, then why weren't steps taken to determine whether it's a possibility or it's going to be a requirement?
The discussion with MIPA and the Army Corps of Engineers, the, what they call the soft discussion before the permitting process, which is standard, did not indicate that, no, this would be a requirement or it would not be a requirement. You'll only find out as we go through the actual permitting process itself.
Don, is that why it's not, it was not in the original costs, and it's coming in as an amendment after the fact?
All of these services are additional services by contract. When the first additional services request for RDA was sent through, which I believe was amendment number four, we outlined a path for permitting, and we had two choices. One is to say, let's go before every agency known to man and solicit their interest, which guarantees a very, very expensive slate of investigations and services, and the most expensive and time-intensive permitting process imaginable, because you then have to go to the highest level of permitting for each agency. Or we can attempt to minimize the impact in each area, such as wetlands, through design and mitigation, and then hope to avoid the most stringent permitting paths and apply for the less restrictive permits, which are sometimes by right. And that was the approach we all agreed to, because it cost the town less money, cost us to do less design, and potentially minimize the services. It was clearly acknowledged by, at that time, and is in the notes that we presented, that there may be additional services required as a result of the permitting, that there will be sort of decision points with each agency where they say, you go this way or you go that way. We hope in every case to, that we get the optimistic approval, and in many cases, we have. And we don't think it was in your interest to say, let's spend huge additional services on the chance that some agency will.
I'm not, I'm not suggesting that. However, since everything you say is based on the permitting process, if there's a chance that we might have to go through this involved archaeological survey, and the whole impetus has been, we want to get this thing going quickly to take advantage of the.
Weather.
You know, weather and, and the, you know, good outlook as far as price goes. So, wouldn't we want to start what we could in the permitting process so that we can not ask for, but trigger what might otherwise come later, have it come sooner, so we can, we're better able to handle it?
We can't, as David mentioned, it wouldn't, I mean, we discussed doing a hundred percent of the worst-case scenario of all permit.
Have we applied for that's triggered this?
This was, this was with MIPA, and this is our last way I understand it.
What permit have we applied for that triggered this?
Can find the letter. I have, the Mass Star Commission, I believe, was, was requested to conduct the intensive archaeological survey, so I'm not sure.
Project requires a permit from the US Army Corps of Engineers.
Yes.
And it's, it's concurrent with state law, too. There's a federal law and a state law, they run concurrently on preservation.
And what permit do you need from the Army Corps of Engineers? And what, what do you have to have to apply for the permit? You don't need construction documents?
Construction documents.
They, each permitting path has its own requirements, and I can't stand, I don't want to misrepresent the specific requirements of each path, and I don't think I have that document with me. It was prepared by Leslie Fanger of BSC, who's our site engineer. But the wetlands permits require one set of documents, will basically show the existing wetlands and the encroachment on them and the area of disturbance and so forth. And each one, I don't, if you would like us to get you a write-up of, which has been produced, it's not new information.
I'm not looking to impose more, more of a workload on you. All I'm trying to get at is, if I were doing something of this nature, and I know what I want to do is dependent on good weather, and I want to continue, you know, complete this project as quickly as I can. this project as quickly as I can, because that's most favorable for everyone, me and my, my clients. I want to anticipate things. I want to find out, in the most efficient way I can, what it is that I'm going to be required to do, that's going to consume a lot of time.
May I give an example? We, we know, before a project starts, there are certain agencies we have to appear before. The building inspector would be one. Every project built in the US goes before the local building inspector. So that's an agency where we attempt to engage proactively, as early as possible, but when we're ready, when we have the information, we think that's at a sufficient level, for the building inspector to make a reasonable determination. If we have very loose plans, they don't have much to really say about it. But we certainly want to go in that direction. The fire marshal would be another example. The life safety officers review all plans of all buildings. So that's a given. But there are other agencies where they may not have to get involved, and this was one where we did not believe necessarily they would. And it's, we had made a strategic decision not to look for trouble. In some cases, trouble will find us anyhow, along the permitting path, and in this case, it did. And I don't know how to say it, other than, there will be other trouble spots in this project, and we, we are trying to stay ahead of them all. But this one came up, and the consultant reacted very quickly to, or the, the design team, had to find a specialty subconsultant, who wasn't already on board, this firm PAL, they had not been a consultant in other aspects of the project. So they had to solicit a proposal from them, and coordinate it with their other consultants, to make a full request, and it took a few days to put that all together. And as you probably know, the first emails that circulated only included the archaeological portion, which is why I'm always nervous about partial requests, and why I'm similarly nervous about partial change proposals from the contractor. You know, you'll always hear from the first trade, and they'll say it cost X, and then there's impact, domino impact on other trades, and it can become a more expensive, or more widespread than we understood. So we took a little time to get the full number, and put it forth. It is what it is.
Let's face it, this is something we had to do. We don't have any choice in the matter now.
We're, we're trying to do what we need to do, as quickly as possible. That's what we're here to.
We don't want hold project.
Um, with this, originally, I guess it was Wednesdays, the last email I saw was Wednesday's, they were, um, we were queuing for groundbreaking in February. Now that we have, um, PAL on, and Andrews, and the BSC group, which I'm not sure if they were all on board on Wednesday, how's our timeframe? We have a dollar figure progressing, but where are we falling on that timeframe? Do we have any idea?
If this goes as optimally would be hoped, meaning that they don't have problems with severe snow, or frost, or other inclement weather that prohibits them from doing the survey, we can maintain the project schedule. If they cannot, we will look for some remediation, whether that's perhaps requesting permission of the agency to work on certain areas of the site that are already disturbed, such as a gravel pit. It's been excavated, there's no, you know, there's nothing sacred there, so can we regrade the gravel pit in the meantime? Are there other areas of non-impact? Part of this work already is to segregate the site, is, the additional work beyond PAL, is for the site, site designer to say, here are the areas that will never be impacted by construction, we can look at those later. Here are the areas that have already been disturbed by previous work on the site, and here are the areas that are impacted by construction, and not previously disturbed, and need the immediate attention. So they're prioritizing the work, having the surveyor physically stake the site, to focus the work, and make sure that the whole test pits are dug in the correct areas, so that we're optimally efficient. That's, that's what this is all about. We're trying to expedite and keep it on track.
I was just sure if you'd seen in the attachment, that PAL actually has put in their, their schedule, of what they're expecting. Their P S four five, from their, from PAL's document.
They filed today.
They will, they will file for, first they have to get a permit for, to do the archaeological study.
You need permission to do what you're required to do.
With a maximum of sixty days to issue the permit.
Is it appealable? Is, is the requirement for this study, is it appealable?
It may be, but usually, such a process would.
Delay.
We tend not to try to pursue open-ended things, when it's on the critical path. If we had six months to have a discussion, we could say, let's take the first month and appeal, if we don't win the appeal, we'll go do the work. When we're on critical path, meaning this delays, impacts us getting in the ground, it seems more prudent to follow the application process.
What happens if they find something? Has that discussion, I mean, because, I mean, if they've already found arrowheads down there?
Arrowheads, arrowheads aren't, aren't anything of significance, according, according to PAL. The consulting firm. It's evidence of a.
Village?
Village, or onsite, you know, the living conditions that were, stonework, stone tools, pottery, are major finds. So they will, as, as you can see, there's roughly a hundred and eighty test pits that they dig, two meters square, down to the glacial bedrock, which up there, my understanding is ten to twelve, ten to fourteen inches, depending on, on the spot. They will, while the permitting process.
Glacial bedrock, that's not glacial bedrock.
Well, glacial.
No, till.
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry. So, they will, they will go ahead and cite those before the permit is issued, they feel that at this, this time of the year, there's less permits issued of this substance, and that it could take ten days to get the permit. We're relying on that. They'll get out there, as long as the ground's not frozen, and start that. The immediate focus would be where the footprint of the building is. The surveying company would also go in, has to stake out the impact area, because all the testing is done in the impact area itself. And as David mentions, any, any area of disturbance, from a private enterprise, and that would be the gravel pits that are out there, won't be tested at all. And from the point, that they did the actual testing, and surveying, in two thousand six, for the bike path, and found the two sites that, that are down there, down to one twenty-two would not be retested. There is a, there is a, you know, a notification process that's involved, the Native American tribes, they're recognized federally, will be notified, to see if they have any interest in, in the site, so that they have a process there, too. If they, they go through and they screen everything, Carrie, to go back and answer your question, with each test pit that they dig, if they find, you know, arrowheads, they would make notations, but that is not considered a significant find, more of a transient hunting area. Only in the, the time that they, the significant pieces that I mentioned, they then have to do an array of more test pits around that, at four-meter intervals, or radius around that, to see if, if that was a one-off, a one-time deal, or if there's more in the area. And that, that's when, at that point in time, that's when we move into a, you know, second investigation process, or a, a second tier of permitting, at that level, with the finds. The, we have the opportunity to, to do any mitigation of any major finds they find. Parking lots can be moved, roads can be moved, entrance roads can be moved, those are all in the impact area. Fields can be moved. Buildings can't, where we have it laid out right now. So their first order of business is in that footprint of that building. As David mentioned, they would issue a, a partial permit for construction, if nothing's found in the building area, foundation area, and such, that we could continue while we're mitigating, you know, a parking lot area.
Can I make a motion? Anybody, anybody else have anything? I know this is something we have to do, and we can't wait to do it. So I'll move that the board vote to approve the Amendment Number Six, the contract with Raymond Design Associates Incorporated, in the amount not to exceed forty-nine thousand two hundred twenty-seven dollars, said some to be used to perform an archaeological survey of Quaker Highway Site, as directed by the Massachusetts Historical Commission. In their letter dated November eighth, two thousand and ten, said some to be allotted as follows, to BS, BCS Group, a sum not to exceed fourteen thousand five hundred, to Andrew, Andrews Engineering, six thousand eight hundred forty dollars, to Public Archaeological Laboratory, twenty-three thousand four hundred twelve dollars, and to Raymond Designs Incorporated, a ten, ten percent markup, not to exceed four thousand four hundred seventy-five dollars, and that the board authorized and direct chairman, the chairman, to execute any necessary documents.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just imagine, across the country, how many billions of dollars are spent, wasted, because of this kind of nonsense? It's just unbelievable, and it's a major contributing factor as to why we don't build anything in this country, and we don't produce any wealth in this country.
I agree, this is a, a little bit much, but.
We got to do it, but I'd like to get live signatures at some point. An executed con, what I consider an executed contract, is live signatures of all the parties on one page.
Beth, can I get a copy of whatever was handed by David?
I got it, I got it.
Oh yeah, you should have it in front of you.
I, no, I have the motion, I need a copy of what David submitted to the board.
All right. Moving on to old business, A, discussion of the board reorganization. Is there a discussion to be had? We had had a motion, last week, that didn't get seconded.
What was the motion?
To move that the board reorganize. Carrie had made the motion to the board reorganize.
Well, I'd like a discussion to precede the motion. Give me, somebody, give me some background. Every year, we have an election. And for the last half dozen elections, anyway, after the election, the day after, they have a meeting, and there's never a discussion, so there's always telephone calls before the meeting, vote for me, I vote for you, you vote for me, I vote for you, and we choose a, a chairman. And, we've had failed board after failed board after failed board. I have never understood why anyone would want to be chairman of a board. It's work. There's no prestige, there's no accomplishment, it's just work. And, we've had failed board after, good people, all good people, smart people, nice people. But time after time, we have failed boards, and I think we have a failed board now. And, you know, I don't know.
I'd like to focus the discussion on how we can better improve the actions of the board, so we're not a failed board.
Well, you're the chairman, give me your idea.
There are several ideas, and some of them, I'd like to just confirm if they're part of what we'd like to see now, that hadn't happened in the past. One of the things, and Carrie, I believe that you had brought this up, but correct me if I'm wrong, was that motions should be included in the agenda. That wasn't something that we had done.
Motion to what?
Motion should be included in the agenda, for items where we're to make a decision. Thought that was something that you had brought up last week. Correct me if I'm wrong.
I don't remember if I brought it back or not.
I've been talking about that for years.
Okay, that's not something, that's, that's not something that we had done.
When someone outside comes, and says, you know, David or somebody wants us to take action, fine. Tell us what action you want.
Correct.
You know.
So, in regard, and that's not something that we had done, when I was on the board, you know, for my first year. What we have implemented, though, if everyone will remember, is that there's a citizens' form, form to complete, that includes what action they want the board to take. So what I would like to start instigating is having those forms, that citizens are completing, or whether it be board members, or whomever is going to be coming in front of us, have their motion in there, so that we will have a copy of that as well.
It's vital for the chairman to meet with people who want to be on the agenda, and want, are looking for some action, to meet with them, find out, what is it you want, how much time you're going to take, what information you're going to give us, what information do we have to get?
Right.
And what's the motion? That's, that's vital. And unless that's done, we're going to waste a lot of time.
Okay.
You know, and, and again, the reason why I brought this, as I, as I explained to both Mike and Beth, was in tying them with, with the goals. That, Peter, you have continually, for the last six months, from my perception, and if I'm hearing you correctly, you have made that, those same statements over and over again, that we're not, we're not functioning well as a board. In May, you were nominated as chair, and Beth was nominated as chair. You outlined specifically what you were going to do, if you were the chair, what you thought the responsibility of the chair was. Beth concurred with it, and said that she was going to do it, but then in the last six months, it has not occurred, and coupled with the fact that we had, the meetings that we had occurring last week, the, um, the intent of a meeting, and then, it, last Monday's meeting, specifically. You know, that was only supposed to be board goals, and then it ended up into a full-blown agenda, which, again, I understand the chair is free to put things on the, on the agenda, but board goals had been something we had been putting off as a board, for several times prior to that. It, it always seemed to be put off. It seemed like, with the current chair, we are not staying focused. We, we had, we adopted the policy on how things were supposed to come before us. Well, there have been several citizens who have put things before the board, and it did not appear to me that we even followed the policy, that the chair didn't, you know, didn't do as it was set out, meet with the person, find out specifically what it was that they were looking for from the board. Peter even pointed it out in our last minutes. It said, the board will take this up at a future date, the board will take this up at a future date. It's like we continually.
We don't finish anything.
Right, we don't finish anything, and things we did finish, come back to our agenda. I mean, I understand, we make a motion, and it comes back to us again.
Because one of the problems we have, is we think, that because we, we vote on something, we've, we've resolved the problem. But you only resolve a problem by resolving the problem. A vote doesn't do it, if it doesn't address the problem. And we've had a whole series of those things, like, things go on for years.
So what's the solution?
The solution is.
What's the solution?
To start making good decisions. We don't do anything. Do any of us think that we do a good job?
I don't agree that we don't do anything. Look at the amount of streets that, that have been approved, look at the work that, the labor-intensive work, from, you know, us being involved, and Bruce driving and looking at every single street, you know, Mike and Tracy going to the effort of making sure that, that things are in place that we need. Frankly, I think we.
Those are ministerial functions for us.
That's not the board.
But I think that that's something that, you know, obviously, we addressed as resident issues, something that needed to be dealt with immediately, we had set the deadline, you know. In my opinion, we succeeded in.
I think.
That regard.
I think we did a good job overall, in, in the road issue. But it's because, we had fifty people out here, and one young lady was savvy enough to come, holding a little baby, with her plea, and I, how can you say no?
But Peter, I.
I'm telling that gentleman, listen, next time you come.
Bring a baby.
Bring a baby.
But we've, we've resolved a symptom. We didn't solve the problem.
Yes.
We just pacified and, and.
Yeah.
Provide a solution to a symptom, not a problem yet.
But, in fairness to us, the basic problem was not solvable by us, right? They had to do the work to get the streets to the point where we have the, the ability to, to do it. It's not something that was.
Correct. For us to solve, though, it is our problem, in my belief, to, to prevent ourselves from going through this again.
Yeah.
And working with the appropriate departments of the town, and we've, we've probably got a cabinet full of plans that have been pre-approved by the planning board, that have the same lingering issues that we just resolved.
I hope not.
You know, who knows?
There's not many left.
Well, I know-
You know, three years ago, plans were still getting submitted while the, before the housing market crashed. And, you know, as soon as it crashed, some of these things didn't get executed, but the plans are still there. So unless we know definitively, it's still a potential problem, and, you know, moving forward unless we we work together to figure out how we prevent it.
You do raise a point, the legislature, in their infinite wisdom, extend it all approvals by two years, by legislative fiat, so there are approved plans out there that would have expired, or in the last six months or so, that now have another year and a half.
Thank you, senators, thank you, reps.
And I agree with what you're saying, but on the same, the thing that got us into a lot of those street issues is that the town had policies and procedures for the developers to follow, and then the town didn't make the developers follow the procedures in some cases. And when it came down to the street acceptances, when it came down to our own policies, we didn't even follow our own policies. I mean, so therefore, yeah, so we cleared off the plate of some things, but I think we've complicated the issue, because now, if you are one of those new streets coming up, well, do you follow the Board of Selectmen's policies? Yes or no, are they gonna follow their own policies? So we may have cleared some streets off, but I don't think we've made it simpler for anyone out there to understand what is expected of them from the town. Because we don't even follow what we're, what we say we're gonna do.
I think we have a better planning board, and they understand it more now. I think coming forward, after we clear the streets that are out there, I think it'll be a completely different nation.
But the problem, Bruce, is it's transient, right? The planning board today isn't the planning board tomorrow, isn't the planning board in fifteen years.
It was the town planners that we hired.
Right, correct.
Who didn't do their jobs. We paid them big money, but that was work, following up roads and street, that was work. They wanted to be big shots, and I wanna plan something. In fact, they planned nothing.
What, the thing on the door?
Yeah.
But you're right, they're transient. So here's the situation. Now, I don't know if the statement was true or not, but the gentleman here speaking for Glen and Lee Street, he said that when they went before the planning board, the planning board approved it without reviewing the plans.
Correct, without receiving the plans.
So here's the situation. They approved it, the money's back, that ball is now rolling. If for whatever reason, they don't get all that paperwork signed, they're not back before us for the Springtown meeting. They're not back before the time that the majority of this board is still on the board. Guess what? It's a new B O S who's coming in and looking at it going, "Well, the planning board dropped the ball back here. If the same members aren't there, and because we didn't follow the town procedures on all these boards, we're perpetuating a potential problem if it can't be rectified while we're sitting here."
Agreed, but you're making the assumption that every town procedure and policy right now is correct. And I think, you know- No, but that's the assumption you have to make, right?
Right, right, right. It's the one we have in books.
And this kinda leads into the larger discussion of our goals, but I don't even know how many of those are still relevant, if they're relevant. And maybe that's something that, as a board who promulgates policy and procedure across the whole town, needs to do on a regular basis, is review the relevancy of the procedures and policy. I understand where you're going with this, because of last week and the exceptions to the policy that we started to make. But I think at some level, we have to look at, well, are those policies relevant still?
The answer is almost never.
No, that's not true. It depends on what you're referring to, Peter, because the policies that we adopted as a town when it comes to street acceptances were mass general law. So even if we didn't adopt them, no, we, right, our policy said, "We're going to follow mass general law." So if we didn't have the policy, we would fall back to mass general law on some of the stuff. Because when you look at the mass general law, it's really complicated as to where you fall under. But there's that whole section, what is it, chapter forty-one, sections seventy to eighty, there's like all amendments all within that, but that's, whenever, when you look at our street acceptance policy, they're cutting verbatim from mass general law. It's like, you can see where they even pulled in the amendments, and it gets confusing, because did we amend our policy, or is that amendment from mass general law?
You're referring to the section titled "A New Method for Subdivision Control." Is that correct?
See, Mike-
You guys are getting all Rain Man, all Rain Man on me, for God's sakes.
"An Improved Method for Subdivision Control," that's correct. But yeah, that's the subdivision control regulations that we follow here. There's one very important policy that the town adopted a number of years ago, and it would've made a big difference for Davis Height if it had happened ex ante, rather than ex post, and that is the ability of the town to take a bond for road maintenance for two years after the determination of completeness, because that really provides an incentive for the developer to put that road forward, because it's only two years, or until street acceptance. Right now, there is no incentive for a developer to bring the road forward to street acceptance. Especially if you've transferred the ownership in the road to the butters, you have no interest left. Why would you spend another nickel? Well, that's what some develop, I mean, there's a moral obligation to do it, but some people don't recognize moral obligations.
We've had a bunch of-
I certainly would like to see in the future, and this is another item where I'm completely at odds with town council, to take our streets by fee, to to have them laid out as a single plot of land, retained by the developer until the street is complete, and then turned over by the developer as a single parcel to the town.
It would seem to make sense, because we're dealing with one unit rather than individual pieces. And what happens if some of those properties, if they're individual pieces, are foreclosed on, or, you know, or otherwise subject to some judgment or something?
Town councils, town councils reasoning, and I just did not find it at all persuasive, was that if we ever want to discontinue the road as a public way, we can simply release easements, and the road would then revert to the underlying fee holders, but-
We could just as easily auction it off to the highest bidder, which we presume would be owners of the adjacent property.
But, I mean, the, when would we ever discontinue a subdivision roadway? I mean, there's, I can't-
After the Iranians drop atomic bombs on us.
Well, then, then the cockroaches can discontinue it as a public roadway. I don't think that really matters. So I think his objection was not terribly relevant in the in the context of a subdivision roadway. I mean, there are roadways we might want to discontinue as public ways, or portions of them that just aren't used anymore, or unimproved roads, things like that, that that maybe have an ancient heritage, but no longer any use, but subdivision roads are not among them, recently built roads. So I just don't see the reason for taking by easement, when it's much cleaner to take by fee.
Which if you, if we did it by fee, also, can't we charge property tax until the road is turned over to the town?
No. That was one method that I thought about trying to use to take these roadways from when we have bankrupt, bankrupt developers. I talked to the assessor and said, "Well, they own the roadway, why don't we assess it for whatever low value, and when that value isn't paid, we can foreclose, and we don't the road." And she says, "Well, I've never heard of doing that. I've never heard of taxing a roadway, but I'll talk to the-"
Land is land.
Well, she said, "I'll talk to the state," and she said, "We have to do it uniformly. We have to assess every roadway, and every one that is a private way, we have to then tax." And I think that was probably not something we want to do, because then people who hold the fee in private roads that, excuse me, that hold the fee in private roads that were intended to be permanently private-
I mean that way.
Would then certainly rethink their decision to have it permanently private if they have to pay taxes on it. In other words, we have to do it uniformly. We can't just say, "We'd like to take this road, and this is a mechanism to do it, so we're just, we're gonna tax just this road."
Okay, but we're getting off the subject.
We are, we are.
This is the kind of conversation as a board, or that I'd like to see potentially as a goal with the planning board, to sit down, figure this stuff out, get Mike's legal input.
Jay, I do think we do have a great planning board right now, and I don't think they'll let this happen again, but let's hope-
Bruce, you can keep spinning back, and before it goes to the planning board, you know, we are infinitely accepting subdivision plans that are gonna add cost to the town, that we're not sure if it's gonna actually be recouped through taxes. Like, are we really, you know, we're continuing to build, eventually, there's gonna be so much blacktop here that, you know, Ben, Ben will never be able to afford to plow at all. So I think that's part of the, you know, if you wanna look at the problem, we're solving, again, symptoms of a problem. Maybe we're not judiciously giving out subdivision plans, not just on the merit of where the street line is, but on the merit of, can we actually afford anymore?
You can't, you can't deny some.
If you meet the requirements, then your subdivision-
But we can impose a building mortuary within town.
No, we did already, we can't do that anymore.
You can't do it more than once?
Well, there has to be some justification, and there really wasn't justification to begin with.
We can't afford to plow streets?
Well, if I can-
The only other option is to buy the land and turn it into town property, which some towns have. Like, there's one town I know that they bought two hun- the two-hundred-acre farm went up for sale, and the town bought the farm so it would not become a subdivision.
Sutton.
So like, it was, it was walled.
We're off topic.
Circle back around.
Can you give us some background? As a matter of fact, I think we're gonna rewind and keep going back to find these problems, and then solve the core source of the problems, whatever they are, and maybe there aren't solutions to be solved there, but-
But I, your thought process, though, is correct, Jay, in that that comes back to, I think, the idea of where does the town wanna be ten years from now, fifteen, twenty? Because there are ways that you can develop without those intentions, but you have to plan for that. Like, for instance, the Summerfield. Summerfield didn't cost the town anything for roads. You know, it also didn't cost us anything for schools, because we permitted a particular type of community in that area, and so, but it takes that long-term planning.
We did that because that's what the people wanted.
I understand that.
We didn't say, "We're gonna do this." Somebody came to us, they wanted to know if the whole-
But there's a way to attract certain, you know, there's a way to market the town, to attract what it is you're searching for.
But all avenues have to be, you know, and the converse argument to that is, you also have to investigate, all right, what does this do? Do we need a new senior citizen center in fifteen years, when all these over fifty-five people become senior citizens? Have we planned for that, and what's the big cost, right? Well, no, I'm serious, though, but those are the conversations that, at the stem of the problem, you have to start vetting through, or else you end up here, you know, band-aiding everything and-
And you may, and you don't know the answer unless you look into it, because you may or not, the way those communities are set up, there may be no intention to ever use the senior center, just because they're seniors.
Maybe you make a requirement that they build a senior center within the community, I don't know, whatever.
Again, it's a little slightly off-topic, so-
Well, no, but it's related to board goals.
I agree. Well, I mean, we're sort of lumping them together, I just wanna make sure that people are aware of that. Because I do see it as a twofold conversation, of board organization as well as goals.
Are we on goals here, or are we on board reorganization?
Well, I think Peter made this comment last week, which is, I think they are part and parcel, you know. The reorganization is a solution to a set of things that we wanna get done, you know. Until we know what we wanna do, I don't know who should be sitting in that chair.
And we don't know what we wanna bear.
Right, so-
We're not doing, we're not doing the job we're supposed to be doing.
Well, so Peter, and you mentioned this last time, you don't agree with the goals that we all had voted on. You probably abstained.
No, we didn't.
Yes, I thought we had to break these.
I went back and I looked at the minutes, and I, no, we did not vote on the goals. We passed over because Jay wasn't at that meeting, and that's where-
All right. So we'll have a working session to change these goals, if that's what, at least discuss them and see if we wanna have different goals? Because these were the goals that had been originally on the town manager's goals, that we felt were more appropriate for the board to take the lead on and have responsibility for.
I, I'm gonna, I don't wanna railroad this thing. I'm really intrigued by Peter's comments, you know, I- Which one? Oh, when you say, you know, "We're not doing what we're supposed to do." And I look to you in all sincerity, because you've been around here and on this board for the longest, and understand the functions, or you have different expectations of what this board should be doing. So I need to, it would be helpful for me anyways, to understand what you think that we should be doing, so that I can start thinking in a different direction, because sometimes you come to this table, you get boxed into a list in front of you, and I think it would be helpful for everyone, not just myself, but I don't wanna speak for the other three.
I would, that's like, what are we looking for? What are we looking, what are we looking for, you know?
Like, what is, Mike, and you've seen a number of boards, and outside of this town, that I presume some might have been successful, that what is the secret to success? I'm in the haystack looking for the needle.
There is no secret to it. And with the secret to investing, there's no secret. We're supposed to be the chief executive officers. The first goal, number one, should be looking at the financial stability of the town. We don't have that. We're living hand to mouth. As I mentioned before, our reserves will pay our bills for about a week and a half. That's it. That's it. And that's not a very good position to be in. We're not doing anything about that. We don't take a hand in the budget process. We really don't. We're spoon-fed this formula that they've worked out, that so much to the school, so much to the town, percentage basis. And then each town budget is said, "Okay, you get one percent or two percent increase or decrease," or whatever it is, equitably. That makes the assumption that everything the town does is equally valid, equally important. That's not true. It's not true with towns, with companies, with countries, or individuals. Things, some things we do is more important to the long-term stability and growth of the enterprise, our family, than other things that we do. They're not all the same. We have to make those determinations. We're not doing those things. Now, the board voted unanimously that we're not gonna spend fifteen thousand dollars for a mobile television production studio. Town meeting authorized the expenditure. So what are we going to do? That's a rhetorical question, but it's a question you have to think about. You know, towns authorize, towns meeting doesn't spend money. Town meeting authorizes the expenditure of money. We have, and we have to make some tough, in order to put the town on a good financial footing, where we are addressing maintenance issues, I think, we're gonna have to make some serious reallocation of resources. Everything is not equal. Some things we have to put more money into, which means necessarily that money has to come from someplace else, unless we wanna go out and get jobs somewhere, at Walmart or something. The, one of the goals has to do with, number three, improved zoning bylaws. Nothing is being done on that. Nothing is being done. And most of the work done so far has not been productive. Because I looked at all the recommended changes, and it makes it worse. I don't see any improvement anywhere.
Then I'd like to ask you, you know, why are you not participating in that process to make it productive?
Because there's nothing I can do to help the board. I went to the first meeting. Mike set it up.
Yeah, I remember.
Let's go back a bit.
I remember.
When it first became apparent that recodification was a disaster. It wasn't just changing the titles and the, you know, numbers A to B and so forth. It was a complete overhaul, and a drastic change. When that finally permeated, we did something about it, okay. Mike Patasky's first goal was, he was gonna sit down with the Z B A and the planning board, and he was gonna do it. And he went through the whole year, and if you remember, just before the annual town meeting, for the next year, he produced a document with some changes, and some of them were not- And some of them were not bad, they weren't all bad, but some of them were not bad. And the finance committee was having a public hearing. And they were gonna discuss it, and Mike wasn't there. But I knew that, uh, Wixstrom was upstairs at a planning board meeting, and, um, the other guy, the engineer, what's his name? Steve O'Connor. Because they were the two people that, um, Mike was gonna work with. So I said, "Well, I'll go up and get him, he'll explain this to you." So I talked to him, and I said, "We don't know anything about it, we had nothing to do with it." Mike met with him once, and that was the end of it. So that, in the end, Mike said, "Let's pass over it," so that went. Then came the next thing, and it came back, "We're gonna do something about it." So Mike's idea was, "We're gonna call a meeting of the board of selectmen, the zoning board, and the planning board, and we're all gonna sit out." And I went to that first meeting. We all sat at a table, fifteen people, and Mike said, "I call a meeting to order." And then he didn't say anything. And then this Mike started, said, "Well, why don't we try doing this?" And then it went. But it fell apart because there was no, no goal, no, no structure. It was just a meeting of individuals, and after a while, I asked, made some inquiries to the planning board, "Can I see your minutes?" "Oh, we don't have any minutes. We're not keeping minutes." Because, well, you're meeting, you have a quorum, you're meeting there, you should have minutes. They don't have minutes. The selectmen didn't have minutes. Nobody had minutes. Nobody had anything.
That's not true, Peter, we did too.
Except in the computer, they have all these things, you know, page upon page of notes and changes and so forth. It is very detailed, but there's no logic behind any of it. And if you read it and understand the words that you're reading, you will see that they really don't make any sense. But anyway, they haven't met since when?
That's what I was just asking.
Met, well, there was a meeting in June, but nothing...
Speaking of June...
No one showed up, right? So May was the last meeting.
Speaking of June, when I checked with the town clerk's office, um, I wanna see the minutes of the cable advisory committee, she said, "Well, that's what we have is for June." We have no meetings since then. And they're the ones it's supposed to be. I told, if I ask you, members of the board, "What are, what are your goals? What are you trying to negotiate with Charter?" What's your answer gonna be? You don't know. No one knows.
I do, because I've been attending the meetings of what...
Well, okay, you tell me, what, what do you wanna negotiate?
Some of the things they're gonna ask for. One moment. I had a feeling you were gonna ask this.
Kelly, I don't care what you say, you're handcuffed when you're gonna try to change anything with Charter. They just changed the prices on a couple of things, unbelievable.
Yeah, they did, increased the fees for two thousand eleven.
No, no.
Correct. We know we don't have any control.
So you can't negotiate over something over which you have no control.
It's not fair what they're doing.
Unless you wanna use public pressure, but you don't wanna do that, so...
Well, and then if you ask more from Charter, then they're gonna just raise their fees.
I watched that meeting, and that meeting didn't come, didn't, uh, you couldn't hear anything. It, it kept on going, you know, it kept on flipping.
Really?
I watched that meeting on purpose.
Okay.
Just to hear what was going on in that meeting, but you couldn't hear anything.
They couldn't hear anything.
You want the four hundred thousand dollars, come on.
Fiber upgrades for the library, police department, fire department, DPW, town hall, um, senior center, and the new school. No re, no reissued equipment, nothing less than six months old, because that's been a major issue. Um, there were discussions of making PEG a nonprofit. Have dedicated service tech.
That's not something you need to negotiate with Charter.
Correct, correct. No, but that was part of discussions the last meeting. Um, a dedicated service tech, which we currently don't have. The senior citizen discount, we want to, um, get back, um...
Okay.
Because based upon, hold on, a couple more. Um, based upon the feedback from the survey that, yes, people did wanna have an office in Exbridge, but no, we didn't wanna pay for it, like to make a request that the graft and office open on Saturday, but then close an additional day during the week, um, decrease the contract length. Now, these are things that I have personally, these are from my notes, that, of attending the meetings, and the, um, the next step that Mark is taking is to meet with Bill August, is that correct? Um, an attorney who's very familiar with this, to say, "Do, you know, tell us, this is our wish list. What do you think is achievable?" You know, so we can then prioritize from there what, you know, we think that we could be able to get from Charter. And then the next step in that process, after meeting with Bill, which I believe he was gonna try and do this week, um, is then meeting with Tim? I don't remember, who's the representative, Tom?
Uh, Tom Kohan.
From Charter.
One, and, and the idea is for Charter to give us this and just pay for it out of their profits? Is that the intent?
To pay for...
Like, for instance, the fiber optics.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, that, the intent is that Charter's just gonna provide that to us, and...
Charter is responsible with providing an INET, uh, in the current contract, and they've, they installed, although not every, every town building as they should have, they installed a coax, uh, net, which they really don't wanna, uh, maintain. So it's certainly achievable to get a fiber net out of them. It's not that expensive for them to run it.
But does the contract say that, in providing that to us, that...
At their expense.
At their expense, mm-hmm.
Their expense, but does the contract specifically say that they can't then backdoor the fees to the customers by raising rates?
Well, their rates are set, I think, by, I mean, they're gonna build it into the rate, rate structure.
We just got that letter, I understand.
But I believe their rates are set by...
We start asking for all this for the, for the, exactly, they're gonna come, come back, and yeah, the four point five percent to the citizens may be fixed. But they're just gonna turn around, and the extended basic's gonna go from sixty-five dollars a month to seventy dollars a month.
So that is the question. All the things that you mentioned, that you're looking to get in negotiations, are things to benefit the government of the town. What are you trying to negotiate for the benefit of the subscribers?
Um, the subscribers, we hadn't finished the discussion on, um, what the percentage was going to be.
No.
That we wanted to allocate to it.
I'm not talking about just the percentage of, for the PEG access. I mean, in, in general. You're negotiating a contract...
Correct.
With a cable company.
Correct, mm-hmm.
I, I would hope that you're negotiating for the benefit of the subscribers. But I haven't heard anything in the list that you gave.
One of the other things which, um, you had mentioned, actually, although, you know, it'll be brought up, I don't know if it's a possibility, is for people to be able to sort of have the à la carte menu, whether they could choose to have, you know, two thousand eleven, twelve, and thirteen. That's an option. But I don't feel that that's something that they can do.
They can do it.
Well, they...
Will they do it?
Be willing to do it.
No.
Correct.
Um, and because we stall so long in negotiations, there's no real reason for them to give anything that they don't want to, because they can say, "Listen, the state law says, you have to, if you're gonna do this survey for community needs, you have to do that six months prior to the, um, ending of the contract." I'm, I'm sorry, um, thirty, thirty months. You have to begin negotiations to the, the formal negotiations thirty months prior to the end of the contract. So we've, a long time ago, we've lost our strong negotiating hand because the board wasn't doing its job.
But...
And it wasn't doing its job because we had a chairman who didn't know and wouldn't listen. So what are you gonna do?
Right. But that's where I like to think that, now that I'm involved in it, that's where there will be improvements. And I, I agree, we have lost...
I haven't seen any.
We have lost our hand, our upper hand. Well, we're not at the point where we've gone to negotiations yet.
I couldn't even listen to the meeting.
We haven't gone to negotiations yet at this point.
Whose fault is that?
And, because we're going through the process of putting together what the priorities are, and what, taking the feedback from the survey. And actually, there is a benefit of asking for the senior citizen discount to be increased. So that's a benefit to the residents, correct?
It's a benefit to some of them, and you can ask for it. But, you know, they're gonna, you know, I don't know if they're gonna give it to you. And if you ask them to provide any equipment or something, they're gonna say, "Hey, listen, you've got four hundred and forty thousand dollars."
No, no, oh, the equip, not that, I'm sorry. In regard to the refurbished equipment, that includes residents' boxes where people have had some, you know, their cable box, and...
Last week.
It's broken, and they've had to repeatedly go back and get...
I, I guess my point, though...
A different box or have a technician come out.
In that, though, is Charter is a for-profit company, you know, who actually has been in bankruptcy. So it comes down to, again, the things that we're asking for...
People are gonna end up paying.
People are gonna end up paying for them. Yeah, they may get a new box, but their rates are gonna go up, therefore, to pay for that.
Not necessarily so. I mean, they're going to get, Charter's gonna refurbish equipment, and they're gonna give it out. But they're gonna also be bringing constantly new equipment and, um, but the fact is... That if we have in our contract that they can't distribute new, uh, used equipment in Uxbridge, they're just gonna distribute it in Northbridge and Douglas and other surrounding towns.
Yeah, I'm not sure you have the ability to do that.
Right. Or they're gonna turn around and raise the rates to pay for it.
Well, I mean, you know, if...
But that's the purpose of meeting with Bill August, you know, because he obviously has knowledge of other, what other towns have negotiated with Charter and what successes there are, and obviously...
What's the alternative? There is, we don't have an alternative.
We don't, we don't.
So you have no position or strength to negotiate, and I think this goes back to Peter's point, because you waited so long.
The only position you have of strength is if you negotiate the contract in public, on television. And when you, you can use a bully pulpit to keep beating on them about the fact that they, they put programs on, the, the basic, and when people like it, they switch it over to digital so that you try to get people, you know? And when the man stands up here and looks at you with a straight face and denies they do that, you can call him a liar.
Peter, can I give you a good example?
But our cable would not be running.
My cable, my cable's up in December.
That's exactly what happened.
And, and I don't have any choice in what I do.
Well, yes, you do, you have DirecTV.
That's it. That's the only choice I have. I don't want the movie channels. That gives me, uh, two dollars less.
Internet TV.
But I'm just saying, you know, a lot of them, you can't do anything. My time's up in December, and I still don't have an option, either way. Unless I go to DirecTV or something like that.
I mean, on...
Which is too bad.
It, it's very hard to get back something you gave up before. The town had a twenty percent discount.
For senior citizens.
The last time the contract was negotiated, and the board, again, foolishly, had a cable advisory committee negotiate the contract, none of whom knew anything about negotiating the contract, reduced it to ten percent. And, you know, it's not a big money item for them, really, but, uh, you're gonna have a hard time getting that back.
But that doesn't mean that's...
If you think you're gonna get some money for equipment for the, the new high school, forget it. Because they're gonna say, "Listen, you've got four hundred thousand dollars you haven't had. What do you want from me?"
Yeah, no, 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 it's, it's not new, it's not new materials or, or new equipment for the high school that I was referring to in regard to refurbished equipment. That is residential equipment.
Yeah. But again, I'm not sure you can, you can do that. You can ask for anything you want.
Of course.
But...
The negotiations are.
But when I negotiate, I don't look to get things I know I can't get. I look to get things I know I can get, and I make sure I get them.
I mean, in my opinion, out of the things that were said there, the one thing that possibly could get us a little bit of leverage is by turning it into a nonprofit and giving the power, get it out of the government, get it away from this table, get it away from the cable advisory board, give it to the, give it to the cable subscribers. That way, the cable subscribers are responsible for their, you know? They can then talk to their own board of directors, and that way, the money is being spent for them. And then they can decide how much money they wanna give the town, instead of the town deciding how much of their money they're going to spend. And by requesting all these sounds for the town government, like Peter is saying, ultimately coming back around and possibly raising cable rates. I mean, that's, to me, that's the best thing we could do for the cable, is turn it into a nonprofit and get it out of the government.
And that was something, that was something that was discussed on the twenty-third, and the action...
The town did that, once we tried to do that once before.
Technically, it still is a nonprofit.
What is a nonprofit?
Well, the...
No.
No, it's, it's, no.
Cable is not a nonprofit, but it is, the, the papers were filed, and I think never...
Papers were filed, UKAT, Oxford, UCAT, Oxford, Community Access Television Corporation, okay.
But no assets are transferred.
And they used town money to pay for this private corporation, which was against the law. Um, they used a relative of one of the members of the cable advisory committee to receive the five hundred dollars to file the corporate papers, which is against the law. They wanted the town to give this, oh, oh, by the way, they had UCAT, and they had a president and vice president, but they forgot one thing, to file with the Secretary of State. There was no such corporation. But let's overlook those little details. They had Alan Klepper convinced that, and the board voted, to give them a check for fifty thousand dollars for one year's operation in advance. Alan Klepper agreed, "We can give them fifty thousand dollars in advance." Koberman and Page, big shot Harvard Law lawyers, agreed that they can do that. And I said, "You can't do that. You can't pay in advance for services." And it went back and forth, and finally, they kept hounding the treasurer and the accountant to write this check, write this check, I have the emails. Why hasn't this check been issued? Finally, you get to a point, because neither the treasurer or the accountant wanted to go to jail. So there was a, a telephone conference with the DOR. I was on it, uh, the cable person was on it, the treasurer was on it, the accountant was on it, and Klepper was on it, and DOR said, "Don't you dare." But they don't, you see, one of the mistakes that we make is that because someone has a position, we think that instantly they have knowledge about something. You see? Not necessarily.
I agree.
True. But we all do that. We all say, "Well, I'm such and such, that's why people always give their, their..."
Title.
Titles.
"I am such and such." "Well, yeah, which way is up?" "Well, I don't know which way is up, but I don't know." "I'm an ophthalmologist." But anyway, I, you know, people think I was opposed, no, no, I wasn't opposed to nonprofit organizations. What I'm opposed to is taking taxpayer money to fund your non, so-called nonprofit organizations. And if you read, and I still have all the, their directed, you know, the, the bylaws and so forth, it was a license to steal, they could do anything they want with it. It's unbelievable. But anyway, uh, the problem you're gonna have there is that, so this PEG money goes to, um, the nonprofit. Now, is it all the PEG money, which means government? Because it's PEG, stands for public, education, and government. Okay? You don't have to have all three, you know? You can have one, or two, or, or you can have all five. You don't have to. You don't have to have any of them. So do you want the nonprofit, you just do the public thing? And have some money for government, come to the government so we can pay for these things? And have some money go to the education to pay for those things? Or will the nonprofit make all tho, those decisions? I guarantee, none of that thing, none of that has been thought of. Am I right, or am I right?
No, we discussed that. We discussed, uh, in the contract, having, dividing up the percentage and directing perhaps some to the school, some to the nonprofits, some to the government. So that was discussed.
And what conclusion was come to?
I didn't say there was a conclusion, I said it was discussed.
Okay. Now, when did we ask for the six-month extension? Then, two months ago.
Yeah.
More than two months ago.
Almost three months now. So half of your extension is gone. You see what I'm talking about? I mean, we, nothing is being done.
I don't agree that nothing is being done. I, I think that things could definitely be expedited.
We, we appoint poll workers, and we give community licenses, and we do things.
But they are, the, the cable access committee is taking action to look at becoming a nonprofit and talking to Superintendent Zini and, um, Principal Bennett to see, you know, get their opinion of, obviously, because it's basically being the new high school. And if they, and if they would have issue with it.
Who is going to make the ultimate decision?
Of becoming a nonprofit?
No, 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 of whatever. Who is going to make the ultimate decision as to what we do with the contract? Because all these things will be in the provisions of the contract.
Well, that's the, um, I guess my goal is in getting the contract, the duration of the contract reduced such that if they do wanna go... such that if they do wanna go ahead and there, there are no obstacles to become a nonprofit, that that would coincide with the opening of the new school, have the contract run, you know, up to that point or close to it. And then it's the responsibility of the nonprofit.
But, but who-
Licensing would always remain-
We are the licensing authority. We are going to sign the contract. Is the board going to have any say in the provisions of the contract?
Hmm, we discussed.
You see what I'm talking about?
But in the scope of the grant things, though-
We have to, because we're going to sign the contract.
Isn't the cable like a priority of fiscal responsibility and what this board should be doing? Lower in priority than some of the other things that we should be talking about?
Yes.
Because the financial impact of the cable TV to the town is not as high as other-
But the impact to the, to the regiment of the town is, is substantial. And it is our statutory responsibility to do.
But from a priority of core services, as I said, you gotta give and take. And give and take not only money, but our time, how much time do we wanna spend on negotiating a cable contract as a board versus-
Doesn't take a lot of time.
S- focusing on doing the other things that we still need to flush out.
Time has been spent even by this board, but accomplishing nothing. Because a fundamental decisions haven't been made. You see, that's, that's the problem. We tell the board, okay, you go ahead and do it. And then of course, they don't know what to do. They don't know how to do. And then we get involved piecemeal and whatnot and everything is disheveled. And making, making decisions is not necessarily time-consuming. But you have to know, you have to say, I'm going to make a decision and I'm gonna make it based on good information. And I know what is, I want to accomplish, you know, when I make the decision.
So are you suggesting that the board's not giving enough direction to this group or this group-
The board has given no, no direction. None.
And you're suggesting that we should be giving them more direction? Or do you want them to be more directive themselves and-
From what I see of what they have done so far, they're not an asset. They're all nice people. I know most of them, but they're not an asset. They don't know how to negotiate. I mean, they've been on this for a long, long time. And they don't even, they don't know the basics.
So is there a problem then with the way that we establish and, and put people on these boards? That we should, as a board, be addressing it? We need a qualification process to get on these boards? Is that ultimately what we're getting to?
In the best, in the best case scenario, I think the answer would be yes, but the problem is, is that the, the pool that we're pulling from for these boards is minimal. I mean, the Cable Advisory Board, for how long, didn't even, they were a board that didn't-
How qualified are we, you know, Peter, 'cause he worked in the industry, has an exception cable TV, but, you know?
But there's a-
How qualified are we to say who is a good cable committee board member? Who is a good historical commission member?
When, when a person stands up here at the podium, who is then the, the chairman of the Cable Advisory Committee, and tells you flat out, gee, I don't know how to negotiate a contract, I know nothing about it, and the board says, well, that's fine. We want you to negotiate the contract. There's something wrong with the board. There's something wrong with the board. Now, we may not have more qualifications than they do, but there's a difference. We asked for this job. And when we ask for the job, you know, we should say, okay, I'm gonna do the job. And if I fall short, well, I'm sorry, but, you know, I'm gonna do the best I can.
Correct me if I'm wrong, though, is that I, that it was my understanding that the, um, committee was being charged with this because the board didn't want the responsibility so we could focus on other access, other goals-
That's part of it.
In the town. So, but I guess here's, here's the conundrum, is we haven't succeeded there, right?
We have, we have, we've spent more time than the cable committee has, 'cause they never meet.
But that's, you know, that's, that's the crux of a problem right there.
That comes to me when I started out hours ago, that we think that because we vote something, we've solved the problem. You haven't solved the problem. When you tell people who admit to you they don't know how to do the job, and we say, all right, that's good, all in favor, all right, okay, goodbye. You see? Voting doesn't solve the problem.
That was our own failure, because as a board, a- a- and Jay, so you know the history, we did, we originally gave the charge to the Cable Advisory Committee. They weren't getting the job done. So we took it back as a board.
They gave, they gave the board the charge that they wanted.
Correct. Right. And we approved it.
Yes.
Okay. But then they were not getting it done. We were not happy as the board. So we took back and we were gonna negotiate the contract ourselves. And we started doing that, but then we stopped. And so we, that's how it went back to cable, kind of just, I don't even think officially we gave it back to them. It's just we, as a board, another thing on the list that we started, we started reading, we started reading the cable contract. We were doing it section by section and then it just fell off the agenda and never came back on the agenda again.
So the issue... Is that the board doesn't follow through on the things that it's supposed to? The board doesn't have time? The board lost interest? You know, how do you, how do you solve this?
Is it the changing of the selectmen?
Does it, um-
There's always this period.
No, 'cause three of us were on it. It wasn't the changing of the selectmen.
You have a new chairman.
Yeah.
And, you know, time flies, even when you don't have fun. And then nothing gets, nothing gets done, you know? You, w- w- there's been a lot of single-term selectmen.
Yeah.
Uh, single-term chairman. None of those things are, uh, speak for efficiency.
So taking the cable committee aside, is there a deeper solution, a deeper problem with all committees that we need to be working and focused on to help maintain continuity from year to year, board to board, within these places? Or do we have, uh-
As Harry pointed out, you know, we can't force people to be on committees. They have to say, many times we have to go out and try to empower people that we think will be good, which is a good idea. You know, listen, we think you can help us, will you come and help us? People respond, will respond to that. But the other issue is, take a look at how many committees and boards we have. I mean, we're a silly little town. Twelve thousand people. I think we have fifteen thousand on committees so far. I mean, it's, it's mind-boggling. I think, um, we used to have a list. I think-
We do.
Tracy did it recently, updated it, the list of all the members of committees and so on. I mean, it's a long, long list.
I looked at it sadly.
But it's not atypical.
No, I know that. Yeah.
Even a quarter of the size of Uxbridge stands, that many committees.
But it is a problem, 'cause you, you're a pool of people who do, um-
A- and that is a problem getting it, people with the requisite knowledge base and experience. Because sometimes you almost have to Shanghai people to get them onto committees. Uh, it's, it's very difficult and it's gotten more difficult.
Well, we have the Board of Health. We used to be elected, with the charter being appointed. Then they made it, people who were on it wanted to be elected again. So they, we had to make it elected. And a few days before the election, I was, see, there's no one, no one wants to be on it. So I said, okay, I'll do it for a year. And I, Shanghai somebody, I, I, I told them it was just for two years. And I thought it was, but it's, it's three years. But, you know, there, we're in progress. We own three members and we all do the work. And we, we cleaned up some things and cleaned up some backlog and made some things that were onerous for people, less onerous and, and so forth. And, um, we'll see how it goes.
So does the Board of Health have goals?
Just do the job.
No. Mo- mostly what the board does is statutory. You know, we have certain statutory obligations as far as inspecting restaurants and housing violations, things of that nature.
I guess I'm, I'm looking to see if there's something that we can glean from, you know, it sounds as if being a member of the Board of Health, that you feel that that, that board is more successful than this board. So I was looking to see if there's anything-
The kinds of things we do are different, so they're not directly correlated. One of the things we're, we're looking at, um, again, renew, uh, with our fees. You know, you know, what, how do we justify them? How do we justify the fees that we're charging for different things and so forth? We've taken some things where previously boards have issued regulations that go beyond what the state has. So we've gone back to what the state, what the state, the state regulations are at the town regulations too. So we've cleared up a slate of additional things that we make people do. I mentioned to Mike, um, a few weeks ago, like last week, somebody came in, we approved septic plans. So a man, engineer came in with a bunch of septic plans and we asked for four copies and he gave us the four copies and the check and so forth. And then he had a bundle of plans under his arm. And the secretary said, oh, are those, another one? He said, no, it's the same one. There's nine copies for the Conservation Commission. They want not one for each member of the board, they want. I said, this is crazy. This is idiotic. You know, it costs a lot of money. There's no reason for it. So those are the things that, you know, town-wide, we can, we can help. 'Cause everything we do, that we, everything we make people do costs money. It makes them less efficient. And it makes living in Uxbridge and doing things in Uxbridge less desirable than in other places that are more efficient.
Mike, can I just make a point on the fees? Could you make sure every, every member of the Board of Selectmen has a copy of the fees as they are right now?
Okay.
We all got it from Tracy?
We already have them.
You have, you, you have yours? Okay. Because I wanna go over every single one of them and see if we can-
I reviewed fees, but I don't set fees for-
I don't. I just, I've been, I was looking at them Saturday and, and I just wanna make sure.
But one of the things, Peter, that, one of the things, Peter, that you mentioned that should be a goal is for us to look at the financial stability of the town, right, to maintain the financial stability of the town.
I think that's vital.
I agree. I agree. Um, that also happens to be the first goal that we also have for Mike. So, is there-
I think there's a, there's a, two, two levels we're operating on. My level is an operational level and for the most part, that's been the level that it was necessary to operate on. But I, I think I've given it's a year, year and a half ago, warning to the board that, that we are approaching a level where it becomes a policy, uh, policy deci- decision. Because we've made cuts and we've made cuts and we've made cuts, but we have maintained services, shuffling things around, and we've continued to do what we've done. We've maintained a level of services. That is not necessar- not necessarily supportable in the long-term, absent additional revenues. The trend has been flat revenues and increasing costs. And, I mean, we get small increases, but they have not, they have not tracked. And we've had cuts in state aid and such, and we may see those cuts again. If there is a substantial cut in local aid, nine C cuts, uh, those, those budgeting decisions are going to shift to another level, which is a policy level. And it's gonna be for this board to determine what are we gonna stop doing that we do, that we do now? I mean, what is, uh, what's most important and it's, it's gonna be something, well-
We've already made some of those decisions and I, and I say that-
These are gonna be guns and butter decisions.
I understand that, but, but we, in the last two years of sitting on this board, like, the streetlights was one of those policy decisions that we made as a board. We decided that, given where we were, we were going to have to, we were gonna have to start taking small bites out of the apple to avoid the one big bite. But we knew that there was gonna be a point, if we get any additional cuts, we're gonna have to take a big bite because we have been taking those small bites out of the apples we go along with the. And that's why we, the winter maintenance policy, there was a twofold to that policy. But, you know, it comes down to the tough decisions that we're gonna need to come to as a board. And I think that that's, for me, that's where it's critical right now, um, in what we're doing. I mean, it's, it's going back to what is the big picture? And we have not established as a board what the big picture is here. It's, when I ran for the board, the first time I ran, I wanted to put into a, a long-term, short-term, midterm goals of where this town was going and what did people see? You know, a- In my own personal household, five years from now, I know what the big-ticket items are. And I know how I'm gonna get there and pay for them. I don't see us doing that as a town here. I see us doing everything as a reactionary. Someone comes in holding a baby, ooh, ah, you're right, we fold. We, we start making knee-jerk reactions and I don't think we understand the consequences of the cost. Well, we'll figure out a way to pay for it. How are we gonna figure out a way? We just threw our semi-long-term plan. Every time we spend an extra dollar because we fall on an emotional decision, we're affecting the long-term cost here. Because money still talks for this town and we're, and we don't see any future revenues coming in, which we don't, unless you all know something, I don't know, all the potential revenues coming in in the next five years for this town are on hold.
Your example you picked, though, I think is probably not the best one for that, for what you're describing. I understand what you get, because, you know, ultimately these streets, I imagine they are planning to get accepted at some point.
Right.
But we, we have in our charter, right, that we need to review this capital plan. When does that typically occur? When do we do that?
Well, reviewing the capital plan is a exercise in futility unless you have a plan to finance capital expenditures. And if you don't have the money, what's the sense of having a plan? It's like shopping for a wedding dress and you don't have a, you know, a fiance.
Well, it's not a plan, it's a priority list.
Yeah.
A plan is a priority list with a funding mechanism and, granted, we don't have a funding mechanism right now.
No, that's, that's not a fair statement, because our plan was as, as a board, so I thought that we were going to put in this, in FY twelve budget, we're gonna start putting, it's gonna line item. We're gonna have money going into that capital plan. Now, it may not be the amount that we had planned to project two years ago when we agreed that all the money from Free Crash went into stabilization and back out. At the same time, you know, the goal on that is five percent, correct? Well, capital, to go into capital plan, there was also a percentage set aside. Now, we just don't have the revenue to do that. So now it's take a step back. We're gonna get something into that line item for FY twelve. At this point, and that's gonna be a policy decision for this board, is, is it gonna be ten thousand dollars? Is it gonna be a hundred thousand dollars?
Town school building.
If it's a hundred thousand dollars and our revenues aren't increasing, which the projection doesn't look like they are, then is that a priority where we're gonna actually take the money from other departments in order to achieve that? That's the decision this board has to make.
Do we feel, does this board, and Mike, do you feel that there's absolutely no other cost savings to be made in this town?
It depends what you consider a cost savings. I mean-
One that saves money.
Well, yeah, sure. Sure, there's lots of them. But, okay, let me, let me put it this way. There's lots of cost savings, but if you mean by freebies, cost savings that don't have an impact, I'm hard put to name one.
Well, everything has a trade-off, right? Whether you upgrade or downgrade, you're always trading something. So that, there's never a, a net zero effect to it, you know?
Sure.
Have we looked at regionalizing services?
Yeah, we have. We have.
Across all and they're all exhausted and there's nothing-
No, we, but, I mean, that's not something that happens overnight and, and, I mean, it requires cooperation. Uh, the last conversation I had with Ted, we, in Northbridge, we talked about, um-
Nothing in the last six months since I've been here have come across the board.
Well, not to the board, but it's been- Well, not to the board, but it's been.
In the last two years, it was regionalizing the fire department with Northbridge for the North Fire Station. Um, it was regionalizing.
We're still talking about that.
The police department, um, the dispatch with Millville and Mendon and when they did all of that thing. There was also, um, providing water to Mendon was a form of regionalizing that we also had explored. Um, talk, we talked, we spoke with Douglas.
Where are, I guess the question is, if money's a problem and these are potential avenues, unless we've already explored them and said there's no, why aren't these some of the highest priority items that we're, that are on our agenda?
Because with all of those, generally what happens is some, some department head is going to go bye-bye. I mean, you're not going to need two fire chiefs if you merge a fire department with Northbridge.
Same thing with police.
With police and fire. So that's where, I mean, that's where a lot of negotiations break down and becomes who's going to take the lead.
These things take time and are difficult because they, frankly, are intensely political.
But, but this is what, what the gap is, I've been here for six months and, and none of these things have thrown through my inbox. And so, you know.
I mean, we, we started formally, for example, with the, if we were going to combine.
We, we actually put dollar figures for the, for the Millville-Mendon police thing. We put a, we put a written dollar proposal down on the table. We were lower than what actually happened and they didn't accept us. Matter of fact, what, we didn't even hear, we heard in the paper that they had decided to merge without even getting a call back.
It was all set up. It was a setup.
It was a backdoor deal.
Yeah. It was a setup.
And frankly, I think they paid for it afterwards because they, the proposal they accepted had a much lower dollar figure, but was completely unrealistic. It had, uh, uh.
What does America, they didn't do it.
We had a more robust proposal that made more sense. But, for example, Douglas recently, recently posted for a fire chief. I don't know if they've actually hired a fire chief. So I talked to the town administrator and said, this would be a perfect time to consider a merger of departments since, you know, you just have a fire chief there, but, you know.
Hey, we got a new truck.
Yes.
That's a good truck.
Car one, car four.
Uh, but he, you know, he kind of, he thought I was joking. I mean, he just was not.
Wasn't receptive to it?
He was not receptive to it.
We do have an asset, that's why.
Yes. Ted is receptive to.
Are, are we not reaching out the right level?
Because he has the same.
Board to board?
No, we haven't.
Ted Kozak.
Matter of fact, the eleven, the eleven town group hasn't even met in a year. It's been a year since the group met.
Been more than that.
Longer than I think.
But as soon as that meets, right, the competition gets
That was last November.
Heavy, right? We want to cut this thing off before you get it to eleven towns. You want to go strike our deals before there's a board in place. And, you know, everyone comes into the battle, right?
You know, we got a power plant down there and it needs water. Why can't we be selling the water?
We don't have a power plant down there.
No. They need water to operate. And we have water.
So the bottom line is
Peter's starting to draw.
That we're going to have to make some tough decisions.
Yes, we are.
When you really analyze regionalization of this, regionalization of that, um, you don't save what you think you're going to save. You'll save some, but what will happen is there'll be a sub-chief here. So, you know, we're going to have to reduce the things that we do. I was in the library this afternoon and, um, the, the clerk was talking about how, you know, I don't get as many books as I, I used to because I have almost every book. But anyway, she was talking about this interlibrary loan where they've cut back now. Uh, some books, if you want them, you have to pay something. And, you know, I said, well, what's wrong with that? She said, well, you used to come in here and we would get books for you from different places. Yeah, and there was no charge. Yeah, that was nice. But, you know, I can pay. If I, if I don't want to pay three dollars to have a book that I want, by what right do I ask you who don't want the book to pay part of it so I can pay a reduced fee? Or, or no fee? See, I have a letter from the librarian when I talked about some of the books that they're buying and so forth. And she had to figure, she said, fifty percent of the people in Uxbridge use the library. Good. That means fifty percent of the people in Uxbridge are paying for a library they don't use. Is that fair? Now, I'm not saying that the fifty percent who do use it wouldn't be willing to pay more, you know, because why should they? They're going to volunteer here, I can give you some money. Because it's free, you know? Everything has a cost. Everything has a cost. Do you think if the senior center were funded by voluntary contributions, uh, like, you know, as a private group, people get together, let's have a place where we can get together and play cards and have meals? Do you think they would have a full-time director? No. So what do we need a full-time director for?
A lot of cities, they, um, that's where I learned on my trip that majority of the senior centers require a membership fee. You know, it's minim, it's a small amount of fee. It's like ten, twelve dollars a year. But to use a senior center, you have to pay an admission fee.
And if, if I don't want to pay ten dollars a year, again, by what right do I ask you who don't use it to pay so I don't have to pay? Where's, where's the logic? We didn't always say, that was, uh, Lyndon Johnson's wife. Didn't she start senior centers?
Lady Bird.
Lady Bird. Yeah, that's when they came in. But there are other, other centers, you know, the Faith Fellowship Church has an active group and they have trips and they do all these things.
They do a lot of civic stuff.
This Saturday, if you want a good meal, go to the Armenian bazaar at the Christian Reform Church in Uxbridge and in Whiten, in Whitensville. But we raise money and we serve food and it's an enormous undertaking. I mean, the ladies work for months and months to cook all the things and so forth. We don't have a paid director. Everything is done because people want to do it. But if the government took that over right away, you'd have to have a paid director with a master's degree in bazaarology. And that, that's what it is.
So, so when, when do we get into this detail? When do we look at the budget?
It starts pretty quick. This, uh, forget December, December's gone already. Um, you have to have the school committee budget, when, February?
Something like that, yeah.
You know, and other budgets.
Before then.
And then in March, we're going to start the spring town meeting.
We're going to have marching orders to departments as to where, you know, what they're going to get. The more time they have to plan, the
Sure.
the easier they can, they can meet there. It's not fair to go to them a week before town meeting and say, okay, you know, we're going to take, lock this off your budget.
Well, I mean, it's a process. Right now, the farther along we get, the more, the better our numbers are, the better the projections we, we have as to what we'll have for available funding.
See, I'm not, I'm not looking at that much. You know, I'm going to assume that our income will be more or less what we have this year.
And you're, you're probably correct.
To believe there's going to be markedly different either way.
Unless there are changes in state aid, up or down.
Yes. But I'm not going to, I'm going to assume it's going to be the same. And I know that we are not properly funding portions of the budget and we haven't been for many years. And we have to address that. Families fail, companies fail, countries fail because they put off making decisions that they need to make. And if you want to avoid financial disaster, you've got, the faster you make the decisions, the easier it is, the better it is.
But, but I, but again, this is, it's a policymaking decision. It's, it's a political decision and, and that is, is part of the problem. I mean, there are constituencies for the things we, we are funding.
Yes.
There are no constituencies for the things we aren't. If you cut the library budget, people are going to come and sit. If you, if we don't point Town Hall, no, there's, there are no pointing advocates who are going to
That's correct.
be out there. And that, and that impacts the budget. And there's no doubt about that.
Of course it does. And that's why you have to have Board of Selectmen who know, when I say I work for the people of Uxbridge, I'm serious. And it doesn't mean you cater to everybody's wishes, but, you know, I give people financial advice and sometimes it's tough. You know, you can't do that. You know, you've got to stop this. You can't have this. And the longer you put it off, the worse it's going to be.
I mean, I disagree with what you're saying though, Mike, on the, on the aspect of no one's going to come because we're not pointing Town Hall. We do. We have residents that are upset that we're not funding our capital improvements. That we said we were going to do it, what, now it's been three years ago, a town meeting, you know, and we're not doing it. So we do have people that are advocating us to put money into that thing that we have been neglecting.
Yes, so long as we don't take it from their favor.
Well, you know.
And looking at the reallocation of resources.
Exactly. There's a give and take, but we, but there are, there are those that feel that, you know, we need to fund this and they also may say, cut this. I mean, you're right, there's a give and take. There's no doubt about it. We're on a seesaw here.
I say cut you, you say cut him, and he says cut her.
It's the same thing with the school building maintenance fund. There isn't one.
That's what I'm referring to.
But we have to put something away because I'm telling you, it's going to come and bite us.
Yeah.
Pretty soon.
By the way, just, is it, before I forget, what's the status of the Boy Scout House? Have you ever talked to me on a Sunday?
I've talked, I've talked to Mark and their focus has been, uh, on the, on the playground, but, which, by the way, the, the equipment's coming down.
What playground?
The playground at the Taft Park.
Oh, okay.
Uh, they're, they're taking down the equipment. The new equipment's going to come up. I would say the Boy Scout House will not be addressed till the spring.
Um, there's a, there's a resident who's a butter
Have we beat the subject to death?
Who's interested in that building.
Uh, there's only one a butter.
No, there's not. There's more than one a butter.
No, there, there's only one a butter.
Not one.
They think they're a butter.
But she's not.
She's not in a butter.
Okay.
We checked it out.
She a bu, we, we checked it out. She, she, her land goes in the back and it
It doesn't hit it at all.
Uh, it, it hits the Taft Park, but it does not hit the parts, parcel of the Boy Scout Houses on.
We checked it, we really went to the assessors office, we checked it out.
You asked if we've beaten the subject to death. Is our, do we have consensus, do we agree that the goal of the board is the financial stability of the town, looking at the reallocation of expenses and planning to fund capital improvements?
Well, you meant, that's not what the goal number one says.
No, no, I'm going off of our discussion now because, you know.
She X-nade one for four.
No, I have, I haven't written them off. I, you know, I, you know, it's just, as a result of this discussion.
Read it again.
Um, that our, our number one goal is the financial stability of the town.
Defined how? Do you have two, two, maybe a second?
Well, let that, let that be the header. Um, through the reallocation, looking at the reallocation of resources and that we also plan to fund.
With what objective?
With what objective? To be able to plan to fund the capital improvements.
With no additional increase in tax revenue?
Ideally.
That would be an objective.
Well, we're at the maximum tax revenue anyway.
Well, no, there's a prop two and a half override that we could be.
Oh, okay, no.
Know what I'm saying? Which I, no, I'm not advocating that for anybody at home, no. But that would be, oh, you know, that's how other towns do it. They say, we, you know, we can't fund it anymore, so we're going through a prop two and a half override.
And I'm not saying I've thrown out the, the goals that, you know, that we had discussed and taken off of Mike's goals. I'm strictly going based upon this discussion. I think that we all agree that financial stability of the town is the number one priority. And that it is different from what we've given Mike as a goal to maintain, what did we say? Maintain the community's financial health is what his first goal is with different bullet items. So are we in agreement that that should be our number one goal?
I think so. I think it should be.
Yeah, sounds okay.
I think it should be.
Okay.
Mike, can I just ask a question? Go ahead. Uh, have we done anything with the, uh, bridge study?
I was getting that question too.
I've talked to Ben about it on several occasions. He, he's been pushing it along because, because of the road issues and I told him it's a priority now. So he's going to get it out so it can be done first thing in the spring.
You get the Hickel Bridge, you get the Hofford Avenue Bridge. You know, we.
It's another funding issue, once we get the results from that study.
You know, we can't have Jersey barriers all over town.
Yes, uh, he's indicated that it, it's now much higher on his priority list now that the road, uh, the street acceptances are done and he's working on it. I've asked him to have, uh, something to bid it out soon. Uh, but, no, I've, I've followed up and, and I, you know, I understand. I mean, he's got a lot of work to do.
Especially with the winter coming up, I understand that.
Uh, but, you know, that's something he, he's working on.
We get some safety issues there too.
I know.
Because of, you know, the condition of the road, what roads are going to be.
And I'm.
So can we focus back on the goals?
A question on the financial side. Do we have in general, and I think I asked this to Dave before, I wasn't sure what the answer was, some general indicators that he looked, that we, we use to track how we're doing year to year on managing what we have?
In what way?
They can show you how much we've increased in revenue each year. Um, the departments, for instance, like the, the manpower, whether the departments have, you know, what's the manpower, has gone up or down?
Manpower, the cost per man, you know, and I think each, each
I haven't seen cost per man.
Each focus has got a different set of things, but, you know, it's their way to kind of create a baseline of, of normal, right?
I mean.
Which is, the benchmark, so that suddenly we can start to, historically, year to year, we can see, oh, man, we, we've been down here.
We prepare a staffing plan and we have it historically back a number of years.
Uh, but is it per, per department, not like a number of people, it doesn't matter?
And gee, the one thing that I see when you look at, which is hard, is that when times are good, government gets fat. So when times get slim, when government comes back, it doesn't necess, like, I think what you're asking for is what's the ideal department functioning at and are we up or below that? Is that what kind of, you know, because like.
I don't know if you use ideal, but what do we look at each year to say, hey, you know, we're doing the right thing here or we're doing the wrong thing? How, how do we know? As long as we spend all the money, we break even, we did the right thing? You know, what, hot, and I don't know what they are for each department, but maybe as part of this exercise, when we look at the budgets, if we can extract out, you know, what are the things that next year when we do this again, we'll have an idea of whether this works or not? You know, because I, you, you can make changes and then, you know, the board's going to change and then they come in the next year and someone else is going to have a different, but we, we never have anything to reflect back on and say, hey, this
This was successful.
This was successful or not, we should maybe try this, you know? We tried it with the senior center, it worked well, let's try it over here and, you know, this thing, because we think we can see the same thing. I just, it just seems like everything is, again, reactive because we don't know what the baseline is.
I think it depends on how you measure, you measure that. For instance, when I was a manager, I used to have one registration assistant for five states. Um, she did a superb job. I mean, she was an outstanding employee. She handled that all by herself. Well, then they gave us more money, so we hired two more people, so now we had three people doing the same job.
Mm-hmm.
They got it done. The superb one still got the superb, although she had more time. So the only, all the work was still getting done, even though it was spread over three people now. So it's like, okay, did we really need then to hire two more employees to do the work that one was doing? Well, it depends on how you measured whether, was it just getting the work done and that was the measurable mark? Or was it that extra hello, how are you? Or was it that extra hello, how are you in the customer service, that then justified the additional expenses? You know, it, so that's, I guess the question is, is what, you know, are you looking at just productivity?
Just at the very basic level.
Right.
Highway department.
Right.
When, average salary per head. You know, for the last couple of years.
Just manpower itself.
There's no question that's gone up, but-
Sure.
When you look at what's being done, I, I mean, are the roads getting plowed? Yes, they're getting plowed. Uh, are we doing it with fewer people, the, because the, the overall departmental budgets are down, because there's fewer people. They make, they make a little bit more money than they did five years ago, but I, I think when you look at the departments individually and as a whole, you'll find that, uh, by any, any, uh, quantity-based measure, we're much more efficient. Because we've had to become more efficient, we have less people, and in some cases, for example, the police department, uh, they're doing far more calls today than they did twenty years ago with less, with, with fewer, fewer officers. Uh, ambulance, e- everything is, is become more efficient, uh, in the sense of producing quantity, because we've had less people to do it, and I think that's, we're not un- unique, it's, it's everywhere out there. People have cut back, and the workloads have not cut back, and, you know, do it, or you're not gonna, or we'll find someone else who will. Uh, we may do because we have to, uh, but that's a trend that can't continue forever, I mean, uh, uh, you know, there's a saying that you know, the, the person who said, "We've, we've done more and more with less and less, so now we do everything with nothing," well-
Oh, we spend more and more on overtime.
There's a breaking point, you can't do everything with nothing, um.
So, when I say we're spending overtime.
We're, well, we're spending more on overtime, but other departments don't have overtime. Uh, so, yeah, customer service is not as good as it used to be, response time is, is not as good as it, it used to be. Uh, people come in here, you know, when, when can I see the building inspector? Well, he works part-time. It may not, and he comes in during the evenings at times, so, you know, he's not always gonna be available.
Where you're coming from, I think we need to take a good look at every department, what we had five years ago, what we have now. Is that what you're looking for? Because I would like to see that myself.
I think it's a good place to start.
I'm, I'm a patient person, I'll wait for five years out to benchmark against today, and not to be all retrospective, but I think it'll be helpful, you know, this is where you're gonna start to learn-
We can give you that information.
While we're starting to analyze these things.
The old budget books, you know, it has every department, all the number of employees, full-time, part-time, and the expenses, and you can track, you can track them.
But I think we also can identify some of the things that we wouldn't repeat, um, in the practices, or the, you know, just because you had more, it didn't mean we were more efficient at what we were doing, even though we had the tools at the time to do it.
Correct.
We had more money to spend, so did we spend it wisely, and did, you know-
There isn't one formula for every department, for every, that, that works, but, you know, as, even for these department heads, to help them anticipate, you know, the next year's budget, and help them plan for next year, hey, maybe I have everyone that's gonna go jump into the next pay grade, next year is gonna skyrocket my budget through the roof, you know, so I need to start thinking about how I can be more efficient in other things, 'cause I really, those people do an outstanding job, I wanna keep them. But, you know, how, how much of that information is, is available, how, you know, are-
Is it something that you just get from looking at a budget book?
Well, you, you necessarily can't unless you, like, for instance, the sewer department. Okay, um, they've got, what, three people that are gonna retire potentially in the next five years? There goes all the experience in that, if they all go out at the same time, the sewer department doesn't have anybody that has the licenses, the experience, the hi- the institutional knowledge, so, that's a good example of, looking on a piece of paper, it's gonna tell you how many employees they have, how many they had before, but it's not gonna tell you where those employees are gonna be five years from now, or potentially where they could be five years from now. But that's critical for that department to be functioning correctly in five years, what process and steps are they gonna take? 'Cause inevitably, people are gonna retire, and you, you know, you know, you don't want, just like you maybe don't want everybody in your department to be rookies, you don't want everybody in your department to be leaving at the same time too, because you're, you know, you want a blend throughout that, and, and how many departments do we have that?
A lot, uh, a lot of the-
We have a lot of senior staff here.
Have a lot of people who are the only people in a department, and when they leave, well, there's no institutional memory.
Yeah, and I think that's the, the point, like, if there's an opportunity to look at this to, to provide something that helps us learn about our departments a little bit more, and our business, our operations, I should use the word business, better, so that when we do have this change in, in, um, in staff, there's something that someone walking in can just get on board.
We, we try and document, but you can't document everything.
No, and I, I wouldn't advocate documenting everything, are we documenting the right things, you know, and that's, I, that's the thing, I think, as we've, when we sit down, and if we're gonna go through this and make these decisions, what are the key things that we learned during the investigation of this budget, that we thought were most critical to influence our decision, and how do we make sure that it's on a thread to be captured? Because this is gonna be painful, it's, it's gonna, when, I assume David's gonna be deeply involved in this, we're gonna go through these budgets, it's probably gonna be long, drawn-out discussions, and I expect this year is gonna be probably the worst, if we do this properly, and then hopefully we can get more efficient year in year. All right, off my soapbox.
Thank you, um, but I appreciate it. Can we move on to, um, goal number one of the original? Enhance and improve employee and union relations. I'd get some feel, just, you know, what do you guys, do you wanna do that? Do you feel that that, that should be a, um, a board goal for this year?
I don't think it needs to be a board goal, because it's something we have to do.
Mm-hmm, okay.
No, we don't have a choice in that.
Right, right.
I mean, we're doing it already, I mean, it's-
Correct, correct. What about number two? Improve town communications and involvement. Tracy, you gave me an update, um, last week, and I think that the majority of our boards and committees are actually full, there were only one or two that were missing, you know, not at full capacity, they're still operating with a quorum, but not at full capacity.
There were, yeah, we're, we're not that bad as far as maintaining the boards.
What's the action out of this, you know, we're gonna-
Right, I agree, I agree.
You got compensation advisory board.
We don't have the-
It's in the chat.
Economic Development Board doesn't have anybody on it either.
I never heard of that.
Am I saying it right? The Industrial Development-
Oh, the Industrial Development-
Yeah, that's, that's required by statute too, but-
There's nobody on that board?
Um, that was that's one of the hardest boards to fill, because it really has no particular function, and in communities like this, it's just required by statute.
Every time we had people on the boards, they were on it for the purpose of stopping the left from coming to town. It'd be, uh, a guy named, uh, Schultz, what was his name? Conrad Schultz, he lived up in South Uxbridge, yeah, and he was getting on that committee to get advanced notice of any business that was in the town. And I got so that I found out from his rationale, he established a, a, a de-development zone three miles around his house, nothing could be done.
So do you feel that this is a valid goal, or this, is it, what's the purpose of it? Is it providing value? Is it, does it fall under the description of us being the CEOs?
Well, it's not, the, the, the headline doesn't go along with the, the detail, it says improve town communications and involvement.
Should be improve communications to the town. Mm-hmm, outward.
Yeah.
With the second bullet.
Well, we have plenty of outward communications, we have the stupid cable, and we have, um, you know, sign boards all over town saying that we pull around with our, uh, police department four-wheel-drive pickup truck.
So is this something that is not working towards our end goal of operating as the CEOs of the town, the elected officials of the town?
I don't think it's-
To me, it's just a bluff.
Mm-hmm, I agree, no, I agree, I don't think it's valid, done. Um, number three, support planning and economic development, work with Selectman Appointed Committee to improve zoning bylaws, and place on the spring town meeting warrant.
Well, that ain't gonna happen, I'm sorry, I'm just being honest, there's no way it's gonna make the spring town meeting.
I agree.
There's no way it's gonna make spring town meeting.
Does that mean it shouldn't be a goal?
Shouldn't be, right.
Exactly.
Right, I'm just-
It has to be done.
It, it needs to be done, and it's-
And the, you, you have to have a plan, a method by which you're going to accomplish something. When I look at something I wanna do, I think about it all the time, I, which way, or, or, and I, I think in advance, whether I have to get a meeper or a schmeeper or something, you know, I don't wait till I get a permit, I find out all those things, every contingency, I think about way in advance. And that's what you have to do.
Mm-hmm. So is this valid to put together a plan?
I think so.
To improve the zoning bylaws?
I think so.
I think it is, I think we should keep it.
Um, I, I just wanna comment that this, I will have a lot less availability to be involved with this during the period leading up to town meeting, because we're gonna be getting into budgets, and
Right.
Frequently, ta- uh, finance committee is two nights a week, so that limits the amount of time I can be. And typically, you were meeting it on Wednesdays, so that's a finance committee meeting night, so it will and it's a board goal, but it'll probably go forward with, with, with limited input from, from me.
Well, it's your goal too.
Well, that's, yeah, I-
I understand.
But I mean, if it's, if it's meeting opposite finance committee, that makes it different. I, I suppose, you know, depends what's on the finance committee agenda, but they tend to
But-
Uh, want me there, because the budget's my budget.
I don't see how we, I don't see how we, in my opinion, we need the, we need representatives from the planning board, the zoning board. Um, this is not something that we can, that I think we should do as a board ourselves, we just, we don't have the-
Well, I agree with you.
It was the planning board, the zoning board, they gave us what we have.
It needs to be a, a group project.
I understand that. I understand that, but, you know, in going through-
You're the expert, Peter, you know that.
I mean, the thi- the, the thing that i- it's difficult is trying to get to try to get a handle on what it is that is going to fly before town meeting, what it is that the people want out of those zoning bylaws, that's what's difficult, because look at, how many zoning bylaws have we put forward? Ones that we didn't think passed, passed, ones that we thought were reasonable to pass, didn't pass, and this is, you know, so-
But thi- this is not making a lot of substantive changes. It's getting rid of the idiocy that we have, that's the goal. We had working bylaws.
I guess that in-
Approved by the Attorney General.
I know, Peter, and case law has impacted those bylaws.
None of those things had anything to do, there's no case law that we had in our own old bylaws that, that wouldn't be valid today, nothing.
Then why did we get sued so many times under the old bylaws?
We get sued in the new bylaws too.
We haven't been sued in the last year as much as we were three years ago.
Is it a function of the economy, or a function of the bylaw, right?
That's a good question, that's a good question, you know.
We, we never got sued because a, something was wrong with our bylaws, something was wrong with our bylaws, but they were never a cause of a, cause of a suit, it was because decisions made by the planning board or the building inspector that were, you know, nonsensical.
Was it because of their interpretation of the bylaw, that it was ambiguous, and therefore they felt that they had room to read things into it that triggered those lawsuits?
In, in, in all those cases, the, the building inspector was following the advice of the town planner.
Oh, no. Okay, that's all you have to say.
And that's what happened.
But the town planner was in charge of the whole second floor instead of doing planning.
The changes that we need in our bylaws are, are things that just are incomprehensible. They make no sense at all.
I guess-
You do not have essential services in three zones in the town of Uxbridge. I mean, it's insane, and things like that, there's not gonna be any controversy over those things. And when you present, as, as we know in evidence from what was town meeting voted on, they adopted a seventy-two-page bylaw, all the people that said they read it carefully, obviously didn't read it. And who is gonna read a seventy-two-page document?
Those that are putting it together.
No, no, they did, because if you ask them, oh, oh, where'd that come from?
So do we work, um, does goal number two become to work with committee members from the Board of Selectmen, Planning Board, and Zoning Board to improve zoning bylaws and place on the spring town meeting warrant?
Well, I think we need to strike the spring town meeting, because there's no way it's-
Okay, okay.
I mean, and truthfully, it shouldn't be on the spring anyway, because it, it's something for the fall town meeting.
So, work with committee members?
It's long overdue.
It is long, you know, I, I think that would, you know, what would help is, and I know, in the way that we presented it, I know you disagree, Peter, but it was to simplify the process, we had one flash drive, you know, that was backed up in case something happened to that flash drive, and we didn't lose everything, but we had one working document, and the idea was to try to cut down on how many copies we were making. Um, and that it was a continual working process, and, you know, when we would attack a section, we would jump into the table of contents, or we would jump to any other section that may be tied to that, so, to the public, I can understand where it would be difficult to follow what we were doing from point to point. So when, you know, I know you know the bylaws probably better than anybody, when you say that you find it that some of the changes we were making, you didn't agree with-
No, they were incomprehensible.
Okay, then can, it would really help if you would point out what those are, 'cause it doesn't do us any good to think that to continue on with that thought process if our thought process is derailed.
I, I'd be happy to do that, but I'm, I'm gonna tell you frankly, if you just read the words, I mean, it doesn't take any special knowledge to look at your definition of light industry, and just read what it says, and ask yourself, is this light industry?
First of all, I don't think we changed it, but I, I don't even think that's one of the things we've even tackled yet. We were still in residential, eh?
No, no, it's in there.
Well, um, seeing as how it's nine fifty, and we have a rule, um, open meeting law that we're supposed to close our, close our meeting at ten, if we can just keep moving forward, and this is a working session, session, so we're not gonna, you know, finalize everything. Um, I guess my only suggestion to augment that, um, the goal number two in regard to the bylaws is work with committee members from the Board of Selectmen, Planning Board, Zoning Board, and resident volunteers to improve zoning bylaws.
And place it on the fall town meeting.
We can put it, yeah, and place it on the fall town meeting.
Cause Mike, didn't you say we want all the financial issues on the spring?
Well, that, that's always, um, traditionally-
It's not gonna be the spring anyway, so it doesn't, it's not gonna make-
Traditionally, the, the spring town meeting is the financial meeting, the to- the fall town meeting is the bylaw meeting, and that's, most, most communities do that.
So fall is accurate then.
That was the idea, but as we know in-
It always changed, yeah.
So, then moving on-
But ideally, it would look like that.
Moving on to our fourth goal then of the, um, the new high school project, establish a regular communication schedule between SBC and the municipal office to stay abreast of developments with the new school project in order to minimize unexpected changes to plans.
Yeah, right.
Um, this, this is one-
That one just came up, hey, before they-
It did, it did, but in regard to this, I think that, um, the, um, the change order work group process that wa- that Jocelyn Luster has been using for over a decade is, is part of this. Um, but is there still value of us acting as the CEOs given, um, of the town? Are we serving the purpose there? Frankly, I think we are, because there's financial decisions that have to be made.
Well, we have to, we have to. Well, we have to. We have no choice. It, it's required.
You know, procedural.
I'm just asking, okay.
And they did, they did go right away.
Don't we have a regular communication schedule?
I mean, if anything...
Is there a lack of communication?
Well, I think what we need to actually, what actually I would, um, like to put on the agenda is sort of a standing goal. It's just updates on SBC, you know, and come from you and come from you.
Yeah, and I got, I got a meeting on the fifteenth.
Right, exactly. So things like that would then become standard agenda items if there are no updates and then we pass over it. You know, I doubt there will be a lack of updates, but, um, I think that's the way to improve upon it. But I'd welcome suggestions as well, before you start to doodle.
I mean, I think that, um, yeah, I mean, it's our requirement. I don't see it, I don't see where it's a goal
We can't, we can't take it out.
because it's something we have to do.
No.
I don't see it as a goal.
So do we strike it?
Something we have to do.
Right, I agree.
I would strike it as a goal because it's just a normal procedure that we have to follow.
It's a given. Okay. So then if, um, we have two goals.
Let me, let me comment.
Unless we add more. Yes.
I think two is probably the right number.
Yeah.
Cause...
Considering the size of them as well.
Okay, I guess. Keep it simple.
Yeah, well, and given that, as big as they are, you get into Shannon's Law where you get too much noise going on, you get nothing done.
Mm-hmm.
And nothing of quality. Earlier, we talked about cleaning up the origin of, of the street acceptance mess. And I'll put that on the list. And then I think, you know, two is the right number. So I'm not saying, you know, we can prioritize this list on ones that we think are appropriate. Um, but that's another one I, I would like the board to consider, that we take up as a, as a goal. And then we also talked about in general our policies, looking at, are they relevant? Do we need them?
Mm-hmm.
You know, are they accurate? Are they even, um, in need of modernization based on where we're at?
The more policies you have, the less relevant they are. Generally, policies are adopted because something comes up and you wanna establish a policy to address this.
Mm-hmm.
So you have a policy that addresses that. The problem is that the next time something comes up, it's a little bit different and the policy doesn't quite cover it. So I think we have probably too many policies.
Mm-hmm.
And we've become slave to the policy.
Mm-hmm.
I think the other thing too is, um, even knowing that the policies exist. I mean, I think that three, I can think of three things that have come up where we're like, we need a policy for that. Oh, there was a policy for that, you know, and...
Well, I'll give you an example, the lowering of the flag. Somebody called me up a couple of years ago and, you know...
And we didn't even lower it.
What's the policy? I said, well, I said, I know we have a policy. I don't remember exactly what it is. However, I know the police chief will know what it is, the fire chief will know what it is, and I mentioned to the people who know what it is. That's all you need to know.
Yeah.
And we don't even...
Sometimes we forget.
Yeah, it's, right, we don't even lower the flag for veterans. Now, maybe it's because their family members don't call, which I think is what it requires.
That's like a policy.
But to lower the flag.
Oh, for local veterans. Wh- when we get, uh, we get notifications from the state and of course, we respond to those. Uh, but those, those typically come from, upon orders from the governor.
No, we're referring to, we have a policy to lower them for local veterans.
When you have a veteran die? Veteran dies, yeah.
When a veteran dies.
Yeah. Usually the family calls you, but we should, I think we should be ahead, ahead on that. You know, I, I think, uh, one of us will catch it.
Not always.
You didn't.
Not, no, I know not always, but at least we can try.
So do we want to add additional, the two additional goals that Jay suggested? And have four goals or just have those merely as, um, agenda items to work towards?
Either one.
Yeah, on the policy thing, do, do we, can we say, maybe each meeting, we put two policies on the agenda just to review?
Just to look at?
How relevant, not relevant.
Mm-hmm.
That's more work for the chair, someone's gotta find the policies and pick the two to go on there.
Right. Right.
And it adds to the time of the meeting. But if we think it's gonna be too much and too distracting, I'd rather, you know...
Try it out and see.
Let's, yeah, why not try it? I would also maybe say depending upon how heavy the agenda is.
Carrie, you okay with that?
Yes.
I think it's a good idea. First, I think it's a great idea.
Okay. And then about this, um, the street issue?
We should be able to cover, you know, a hundred and four of them by the time we're done, seeing how we meet every week.
Well, I, well, I think we're doing, uh, good on streets. I think a- at the spring town meeting, you're gonna see it, most of these gone.
Oh, no, I mean in regard to what Jay's comment was of trying to focus on what the, the real issue is and what the board can do to improve the process.
I think we're paying it much more attention now than it was, that, that was paid before.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't think in the future, this will happen. Hopefully not.
But I, I...
Hopefully.
Well, I mean, the...
Hope's not a strategy.
Right. I mean, we've had a policy going back to, for quite a few years, and this still happened even now. So, I mean, I think it's...
What policy are you speaking of? Is this gonna, would this come up as part of the policy?
As what to review?
Mm-hmm. I mean, yeah.
I'm not talking about the street ex- uh, the exception for street planning.
No, no, we have a, we have a street acceptance policy.
Yeah, right.
Right, good.
That's been in effect for several years. Um, and some of the streets fall within it, some of them don't. That's the part where some of it comes from actual law. Um, I mean, it's pretty, I don't remember how many pages it is, but it's pretty thick.
I broke it down this weekend. I have both of them. There's two, two separate things.
Right, there's, yeah, there's...
I'll, I'll make a copy for you.
And we worked on it in the last couple of years.
Right.
Um, we made some, I guess you could say additions to it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but that was, I know that was my personal frustration with town meeting and last week. Because we put, looking at the issues that had been in the past, we had specific guidelines that we gave to the citizens.
Mm-hmm.
And we, you know, we made them jump through a lot of hoops.
Mm-hmm.
And then, you know, are we following our policy or are we not following our policy? You know, where does it leave the other streets? You know, we've bent the rules sometimes, and I know they're just policies or procedures, Peter, but sometimes you bend them so much that it's like, what guideline do we send people to now?
I think that's gonna be part of the process of reviewing them, correct?
That's right.
But Jay also made a very salient point, uh, just last meeting or the meeting before, that, you know, we do have a policy, but that doesn't mean that a policy can't be... Can't be adjusted, it can't be...
Yes, but sometimes when you adjust that policy, you set yourself up for...
I agree.
Yeah.
You know...
You, you know, it, it can open the floodgates.
Especially when we are accepting unexecuted documents.
All I have to say is with street acceptances, the problem, I think, going back has been that the financial incentives worked the wrong way. It was in a developer's interest to walk away from the street
Right.
once he had gotten his bond money back because
Right.
there were no consequences.
Mm-hmm.
We need to create a procedure that has financial penalties and incentives for, uh, penalties for walking away from the street and incentives for bringing it forward to street acceptance.
Mm-hmm.
And fallback procedures.
Go and work out such a thing, and we'll do it.
Yeah, and that's a goal, Mike.
Certainly, I think, yeah.
But that, right.
And I don't think that, that's that hard and, but we've gotta work with planning because they have to implement these. And the other thing we have to have is some sort of a fallback in the event of, uh, financial failure by a developer, which is the source of some of our problems.
Mm-hmm.
Some are more, are more intractable problems.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, you know, we're, we're, we've been discussing the streets that are essentially have legal problems, but, uh, we've probably all been down Waterman Way.
Ooh.
And that street is, uh, it only had a base coat put on it, it has raised structures, it's falling apart.
You wrecked all your equipment.
We were working with the bonding company, but they know it's a big nut to crack and they're, they've, they've dragged their heels as much as they could because they know it's going to be expensive to do.
Right, but the developer was following our policy.
And people have to understand when they buy a house in a subdivision, make sure you know what you're doing.
Mm-hmm.
And make sure you know what you're getting.
Mm-hmm.
But that's where, that's where, we had a policy that addressed that. You could have, you, our policy still says, you can start building houses with a subcoat. Um, and then even in the policy, it says that the planning board can issue waivers. And that's what was going on. They were issuing the wa- issuing waivers and allowing them to continue on even though they hadn't fulfilled. Um, so, I mean, that, I just, I only say that because there's only so much this board can do. If the planning board is gonna issue waivers, we don't have control over that board.
And there are reasons...
And it doesn't matter how many policies we put out.
Because of the equipment's gonna be traveling on those roads, you don't wanna put a finish coat on it until, you know, you're ready to finish.
Mm-hmm.
I do the same thing when I'm building something.
A lot of water and oil on half million dollar houses. You know, it's not like, uh, it's got some beautiful houses up there, but I, I wouldn't touch it with any kind of equipment we have.
So in the interest that it's ten oh two, does the board feel that we have sufficiently, um, discussed the two, the old business? And, and, uh, concluded our working session, 'cause I'd like to move on to member issues, if everyone agrees? Peter, Carrie, Jay?
I mean, I had a motion. If nobody's gonna second it.
What was the motion?
Um, it was tabled for the board reorganization, which was A. Jay, are you satisfied?
Um, I'm s- I'm not on that yet, sorry. Just on this, so for next meeting, are we going to write up these goals and then vote to accept these goals?
Part of the member...
Go through a formal?
Part of member issues is I wanna go through what I have on for the agenda so far. So...
Okay.
And that will be...
So we'll bring this to conclusion in a little bit.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, so the, the question on the reorg, my position is, again, I, I think now that we've got the goals, do you feel that we still, based on what you saw as problems that existed before, do you think the goals get us closer to addressing the problems? I, I'm not sure I fully understand what you had outlined as, as the problems yet. So I'd like to, you know, explore them further if, if you think it's appropriate and you still feel passionate about them.
Well, I mean, my concern...
Keep in mind, there is a election coming up.
I understand that, you know, I do, I understand that. But, you know, it, when I looked at our meetings and where we were going and, you know, Peter can, you know, are we happy, we're not happy, we're not being, you know, we're not being productive? Um, and then we went into, what, seven meetings? It seemed like seven meetings we had in a very short period of time. Um, we were not prepared for our agendas. We had, we had set up a way to be, um, that things would end up on our agenda. And then the documentation wasn't even prepared for us, um, ahead of time. Um, we didn't know exist, pre-existing policies. I just... I felt like, and I guess I still, I'm concerned that we're gonna be ready for the meetings, that we're gonna have, the, the pre-work will be done, I guess. What like Peter had said, you know, when Peter was up for nomination in May, he said, I think that the chair needs to sit down and ahead of time, find out why you're here, what you want from the board. If, you know, specifically, how do you wanna address the board?
Mm-hmm.
You know, and we spend too much time where the stuff comes on the agenda. And I know personally myself, unless I come in here searching for additional information, a lot of times, until I get in here, the information that was provided in my packet doesn't adequately prepare me for the meeting agenda stuff. And so at that moment, I'm like, you know, we can continue to come in and continue to, to address the way that we're doing it. Or we had two individuals that outlined what they would do as chair. And at that point, Peter was the one that was basically saying, we're not on cue, we're not on cue. So I looked at it and said, you know, with board goals, if we're not on cue, we can either continue to do this for the rest, the next six months or, in my opinion, see whether or not Peter would take nomination for chair. And take over the helm and see if we can make a difference in the next six, next six months. Cause I just don't think we're getting it done. I mean, I really don't. Um, Monday night with Jocelyn and Lesser, I mean, in my opinion, and maybe I'm wrong, but the only one that can tell Joss, you know, anyone sitting at that podium enough, is the chair. And it's not happening.
There's a reason I let Jocelyn and Lesser continue to speak though, for the amount of time they did. Because they've come before us before, more than once, and said that there will be things that have already been completed prior to us actually approving them. And that wasn't the first time. So my goal was pretty much to get that ironed into our heads that not everything is going to be all, a work in progress. It could already be completed. And for us to understand that and to accept it. And I felt that, yes, Jeff did speak for longer than necessary, but I wanted to make a specific point that he was able to reiterate it. So that if the time comes in the future and anyone on the board has a question of, well, what's going on? And how come this is already, this has already occurred, we can refer back to... Do you remember when Jeff was here and he went through the process and said, there will be things that have already been completed when we look at them?
Mike, can I give my point on this?
Hmm, of course.
Being the chairman is a learning, you, you're learning every meeting. And my point is, I'd just like to give you a chance until May. You know, every meeting, you're learning something, you're learning something. You just don't automatically jump in the chair and say, I'm the chairman. I know all the motions, I know this, I know that. But I'd like to give you a chance to just keep on doing what, you know, try to do a better job. I, I know it's a learning thing and, and nobody's gonna jump in their chair and think they're gonna know it all because it, it doesn't, it doesn't work like that.
Mm-hmm.
And that's just my feelings. I don't think, I think right now, to make a, a move would, would really be a, a, a wrong message. That's just how I feel.
Just for the record, I'm not a candidate. I'm not seeking to be a chairman. I don't like being on the board. I don't like being in a, on the board of health, you know. Being a chairman is work, a lot of work.
Mm-hmm.
And it's nothing I would ask, ask for.
No, a- and I didn't imply that you were asking, Peter. I, I think that, I think that given... Given what we have coming ahead, you have the experience and, and, and honestly, this is not the time with the school project going on, the financial situation that we're coming into, to do o- on-the-job training. I mean, I just, I don't see it that way. I mean, I ca-... Just with your explanation of Jocelyn and Lesser right there, Jocelyn and Lesser can say something once. And I know myself personally, when someone says something, I get it. I don't need them to say it ten times for it to cognitively sit into my head. So I, you know, I don't quite understand having it...
I disagree, only because you have asked the question before. So that was, and you, you, you know, you're more than welcome to disagree with me. I'm not saying that it was, um... I felt it was the right decision. I felt it was the right thing to do for the board to understand completely if it was repetitious, that this is the process. Because frankly, there are times when I feel like... Because frankly, there are times when I feel like we've underestimated and we have, um, not given credit where credit is due to the school building committee, to Jocelyn and Lesser, to Raymond Design, for all the hard work that they've done of what frankly, this town has put them through. And dealing with the MSBA. You know, this wasn't certainly a project.
Isn't that something that they, they're supposed to do?
It is, but I don't think that it's appropriate then for people to go on camera and, and chastise them and to.
I, I'm not, I'm still not impressed, not impressed at all. The idea that, that, what, what, what are we told? We're told that, whoops, we have to do these things, we have to do them on an emergency basis, hurry up, hurry up, hurry up. Uh, if we don't do it, we may be delayed a year or more, and it may be very detrimental. And then, well, why should we do it before? Well, uh, we, we didn't think we have to and, and we didn't raise the permit and, um, uh, we didn't want to raise any issues, it might not be there and.
So, do you disagree, you disagree with the, the reasoning and the explanation that David provided tonight?
Yes, yes, absolutely. I would have done it completely different, you know, I looked, and, and I haven't been involved in, in forty million dollar projects, believe me. But I know every aspect of what I'm going to do, what I'm charged with, what my responsibility is. I know the pitfalls, I know the regulatory environment, I know what to ask and how to ask and where to go and what to do, all those things are, I know in advance. And if, if it's something that, well, if we ask a question, if we, that might trigger, they might say yes and so and so, I'd go to the people I work for and say, here's the issue. Now, we can do it this way or we can do it this way. If we do this, this is the risk, this is the benefit, we do it this way, this is the risk, this is the benefit. And, uh.
Should have done it from the beginning.
But also, is there a reason though then, Peter, that you haven't been attending the school building committee meetings? Because that's an opportunity as well to speak up and for you to ask those questions.
How many people in school building, Peter?
What, twelve?
Twelve.
Probably.
And we have Jonathan Lesser, and we have the school business manager, the superintendent, and then.
Mike.
That doesn't mean you can't attend the meeting.
I can't, but see, here's, as a general rule, if there are ten people that want to do something, they don't need me.
Not if they don't have your knowledge.
If they want me, they can come and ask me a question, I'll give the answer. But if there are ten people who are perfectly happy and content in, in what they're doing, I'm not going to go and say, hey, listen to me now, I want to tell you something. I don't, you know, I have no reason to believe that among all those people, they wouldn't have thought of these things in advance. And they, but they didn't. And I think one of the problems is that we have a lot of people, in fact, one of the problems in the town, we have people who, the most important thing is a new school. Other people, the most important thing is to stop a new school. And people want to, want a new school, so they go in the school committee, the building committee. They want a new school, I want to be on the Board of Selectmen, because I want to push that new school. People who don't want a new school, I want to be on this committee so I can stop the school. I want to be on the Board of Selectmen, I can stop the school. And that's their primary focus. And that's not good for anybody because they're not really doing the job they're supposed to do. If you are far against something, fine, speak out, make your case. But to do it in a backward way or, you know.
I think you're right on that, Peter.
A majority of the school committee members are not doing their job on the school committee. They don't, they don't sign the warrant. It got so bad that they had to let Ernie do it himself, they voted that he can do it. But it's not the chairman's job individually, it's all their jobs. And they're not doing it, they don't want to do it. I don't know what they want to do. They want a new school. And that's, that's the problem. So, I, I have no interest in going to the school building committee and, and adding, being a, a sixteenth voice. There's nothing I can do for them.
I think Peter's right on that, I think they, they should have C Y, C, C Y eight on that because it's not, it was not like it wasn't known. That should have been done right, right when the project started. You know, I, I definitely agree with them on that, they dropped the ball on that, it's no question, in my mind.
You know, and we've.
Hold on, can we, can we circle back and refocus again, the question that you had directed to Jay? That you had the motion on the table?
Well, we're discussing that, I know, we're just trying to. You know, I mean.
In the interest of time.
Those are, they're exam, those are all examples of, you know, the direction that we're going. I mean, making sure that the correct people are here when we have certain items on the agenda. You know, we wanted Jocelyn and Lesser here for our first discussion on Amendment Five. You know, they didn't come, you know, a, a, and therefore we made a decision. Well, then, you know, I guess I don't appreciate us having to, you know, we request people to be here, it gets on the agenda, we make a decision, you know, we're given information, and then it ends up on the agenda at their convenience instead of our convenience. It's like, you know, that's where, it's like, are we running the show here as the Board of Selectmen? Or are we being run by others? And I feel that as a member, we're all, we are all a part of this board. Not one's power is greater than the other, but the, the chair is the one that leads us in the direction that we're going. And right now, I don't think that, that we are representing a good example as an executive board here because I don't think that our current chair is leading us in the direction that the board as a whole wants to go, being the chief executive officers. I think that, you know, if Peter accepts the nomination, I think that Peter would do that better. I don't, you know, his argument that he just made about, you know, divisions and directions and hidden agendas for why we're here, that concerns me, it really does. And I don't see Peter with a hidden agenda behind anything other than getting this board online and on a track to be a productive board.
So, we need a second, there's a motion on the table.
I'm not going to second it, I, I think this is the first time and this has been a very good conversation. And we've sat down and we've said, all right, here's the issues. You know, no sidebar conversations, we sat around the table and said, here's what the issues are. We're all on notice that we think we need to get better here, here, and Carrie, I don't agree, I don't disagree with you on many of your points. You know, Beth and I, Beth and I have had a conversation about agenda items and, and being prepared and things of that nature. But at, my personal preference on this is that not to make a knee-jerk reaction without first addressing it as a group with our chair today and say, hey, you know, we think, we all think there's some issues here that we got to work on together. And, you know, at this point, if, if things don't improve, then I'm happy to entertain this again. But I, I just, my personal preference is not to just react yet until we've, we've got it out in the open, we've addressed it, and now let's, let's see some change out of this group. And if we don't, then I'll certainly second it at the, at the next, the next time we bring this up. But I don't think it's fair not to, to hit it head on and give someone a chance to, to recourse. Particularly where this board has a lot of inexperience, and I speak specifically for myself on this. And, you know, we need to, to groom other people with responsibility. And we can't, I'm just not one on giving up on people just because we had a bad start. So, that's my, uh, my piece.
And I think I should work a, a little closer with you too, Beth. I, I'll take some of that blame and in the future, I will work much closer with you.
I'd like to as well.
You, you, you know, you have my support in going forward, I hope we can change this.
I don't think we have terminal cancer.
No, no, it can be fixed.
It can be fixed.
Well, they have radiation.
So, with that, can we move on to member issues?
Good.
Peter, good, okay. Does anyone have any member issues? The only thing that I wanted to go through is what we have thus far for the agenda for the next meeting.
Do you need everyone to come and come to the sign?
I have some stuff.
You have them all ready?
Tracy, uh, I don't know what this is, but Tracy left me a package of stuff.
Are there minutes in there?
No, this is the gravel permit and yes, this is the minutes.
Well, they've got to be.
They have to be modified, so I'll come back in.
Okay.
What's on the signature page?
Chairman, we could sign.
Yeah, we could, actually.
Is there anything that needs to be changed on that signature page?
Yeah, but it could knock off the.
She'll format it appropriately.
Oh, there's only like one, one or two, a comma and then.
I'm sure she can get the formatting sorted out.
So, you want to sign?
Yeah, sign it.
So, for our next agenda, um, I have thus far the review of all fees. Um, adding an ongoing agenda item for December, which is Jay's suggestion of the winter policy maintenance acceptance. Cedar Woods subdivision, resident update and vote and consider the eminent domain issue. Uh, the board to have changes to.
What's that last one, can you see the words?
Cedar Woods, the eminent domain, where they want us to take over their history. That we need to make a vote and consider if we will go forward with eminent domain. Um, the board to have changes to the change order process, review and vote, review and vote recommendations of the B O S Change Order Work Group representatives. Carrie, you had mentioned if, you know, Mike should be included or if Mike should be the only individual. Um, the budget discussions, that was a broad one. A mid-year town manager evaluation, we need to set the tax rate, right, David said we had to do that. Um, Davis Heights, which would fall, fall under the ongoing agenda item of winter maintenance acceptance. And then, um, the motion to accept the board goals that we just did this evening.
Tax rate or tax classification?
It's a tax rate, I believe, wasn't it?
Well, technically, you're not setting, the assessor sets the tax rate. A lot of people phrase it that way, but you, what you do is classify whether you're going to have a single rate or a split rate. And I, I don't think, have you ever had a split rate here?
Not during my term, no.
I, I don't think, it's universally bad, but I think it, it's not a good idea in exchange.
I believe the government should be fair.
Given.
It should be treated the same by the government.
Given the number of items on the agenda and the length that some of them could take, specifically the review of all policies, um, if, well, we're going to add two policies to each agenda for the board to discuss.
Instead of having them on the agenda, what if we just have them? And we can all read them and make any comments on them without having it on the agenda?
Like minute review?
Does that make sense?
Go further.
That's all.
You just, all of them, like, just two, two out?
Two.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
You make any comments you want, I'll initial it, I make comments, and that way, you know.
Right, and, and if there's conflicts? Then we, the next meeting, we resolve the conflicts. I think that's a great idea.
Can I make a recommendation, they go in the read file? Because if we all have an individual copy.
No, no, be one copy.
That's what I'm saying, one copy, one copy in the read file and everybody makes their.
Put it in a separate file, the read file gets this dip real quickly and you get buried.
A separate file.
That's good, but in there. Because if we, because we can't all pass around the same copy, we can't see each other's changes.
Um, and, sorry, one other addition to the agenda is executive session update on the, um,
Contract.
Contract negotiations.
Possible.
For next week.
Yes. If you want to discuss the, uh, that policy issue.
So, there was one in there that I didn't, um, not the one I asked about.
Tracy out all week?
Nope.
There was one in there that was kind of an open-ended one.
Budget discussion's very broad, that one.
Yeah, well, well, what are we trying to accomplish?
Um, I don't think that that one actually will stay on for next week, given what we've talked about. You know, of being able to look back five years and see where we are, so, um, most likely that will get struck.
So. Yeah, one more thing, sorry for being so wordy, but I, I spoke with Beth and we had a good conversation about kind of how we can improve these things, and I think these are suggestions that I'd like to hear your input on. Putting timeframes on agenda items. What's been your experience, Mike, yours and Carrie's, on certain topics?
It, it, it works, it, but only if you meet with the people in advance and find out what it is they want and shave off extraneous things and say, you know, please stick to this and so forth.
I mean, you would.
Doesn't always work, but it's a help.
It depends upon the agenda item as well, right.
Like, see, and that's where if you meet with the person ahead of time, you know what it is, that they're, and then you can say, okay, given what you've said, it should take five minutes. You got five minutes.
Yeah.
You got to open, you got to close, that'll give a couple seconds if anybody has any questions. You got five minutes. And then that way, you know, at seven, eight month, eight minutes, you're done. You knew ahead of time, if it's going to take longer than this, then we're going to table this and.
Or in fairness to them, do we ask them to say what they think? How much time do you think you need for your.
Right, if they're going to say a half hour, they say, you're not going to be on our agenda this week because we don't have a half hour.
We don't have booked, and that way, when you bang the gavel at thirty minutes, they can't be like, oh, the town is messing with me because.
When, when we. You can tell them in advance, please answer the questions succinctly. Rather than, you know, the historical.
I think it is fair to have time limit, limits for citizens forum. Because when someone comes, by definition, it's not on the agenda. It's something that if, if they're just coming up and bringing a subject up, and fine if it's, you know, uh, to talk about an event that's happened, but if they really want to get into something that's going to take longer than, say, five minutes, it really ought to be on the agenda because other people should know about it and be able to come in and respond.
Years ago, when I appear at citizens forum a lot, they'd be mad at me for, for, so what they did was they moved it to the end of the meeting. So, after a while, I said, listen, I'll make a deal with them. Why punish everyone just for me? I'll wait till the end of the meeting, but please, he, you know, let others make their say and go home. Because I would stay for the whole meeting no matter what, you know.
You got it back though, you joined the board, way to go.
Yeah.
Yeah, we got to meet that.
But to answer your question, I, I have had no experience with, uh, time limits for the board itself for discussion of, of agenda items. But, you know, frankly, this board is, tends to go longer than any board I've ever, uh, worked with. And in fact, probably almost every meeting has been longer than every other meeting I've been with other boards.
Well, on that note, unless there are any other member issues.
Most of them are.
Uh, town manager report.
Sorry, town manager report, one thing, Peter, we're almost there.
We have, uh.
And I need your signature before you run.
Going back, I think before, before I was here, uh, Grif one, the, the first round of, of the, the Grif issue, we, we had the, uh, the second round this year with the town meeting. But the first round, uh, the town went to court, uh, there was some protracted litigation. And we won and we also won attorney's fees, Mr. Grif never paid. We have since gone back for an execution of the judgment and we've received that this week. And it, uh, is for eighteen thousand dollars in attorney's fees plus approximately six thousand dollars in post-judgment interest for a total of twenty-four thousand, one hundred and fifty-eight dollars. in post judgment interest for a total of twenty-four thousand, one hundred and fifty-eight dollars. I, I know you can't float on it, but I, I would like to move forward and barring objections, I will move forward. We have the right to, to sell the property.
Question, Mike, is it one parcel or are there two parcels? A parcel, separate parcel?
I have the legal description here, and it says one parcel, a certain parcel.
What did you give it for size?
Uh, let's see, that'd be down at the bottom. Typically, it would say someone, they're more or less some amount of land, but I can't find it in here.
Check with the assessors.
I, I'm sure I can do that.
If it's, um, you know what, what it is. So what is it you wanna do?
I would like to, uh, take the, take the land auction and get our twenty-four thousand dollars.
Okay, and what's that gonna cost?
Uh, well, I'm sure it's gonna be well over twenty-four thousand dollars and that, those costs will be also borne by the sale of the property. Now, this does not work like a tax, uh, tax title, uh, sale where we get it all. If the property, if the, the, uh, the taxpayer owes five dollars and we, we, uh, we take it for taxes and auction it for three hundred thousand dollars, we get three hundred thousand dollars. This, we get our twenty-four thousand, one hundred and fifty-eight dollars. After that, and I would assume the property will go for substantially more than that, uh, any, it, it's Grifft's, it's Grifft's money. If anyone else has judgments against it, those will be satisfied, but-
But we have to pay for the sale of the auction and those don't go out of the proceeds of the sale?
Uh, that's out of the proceeds of the sale also.
Alright, so it's net, net twenty-four changed.
We take twenty-four, the auctioneer gets paid, anything left over goes to Grifft.
Any, any preparation we have to do for the auction to do this, our cost, cost of sale stuff.
Advertising, do you have to pay for the advertising?
Now, what if there are other liens on the property?
Uh, if there are liens on the property, then they're, they're gonna be paid too.
What if the judgment isn't, what if the sale price isn't enough to cover those other liens?
Whatever, if they're not enough to cover our money or the cost of the auction. I guess that would be the first thing, find out if there's any liens on the property. Also, is there any environmental issues that are kinda coming into play cause of all those tires sitting on the property?
And they got stumps in there too.
Yeah, I mean, a-
A whole bunch of stumps.
Well, whoever buys it will take it as is. Uh, Bruce told me there's maybe three hundred tires there.
What?
There's a lot of tires.
Oh, there's a lot of tires. Yeah, and we sell them?
It's about five bucks a piece to get rid of a tire.
Just grind them up, put them on the playground.
Exactly.
There you go.
Yeah, perfect.
You can't do that.
You can't do that.
They're too old anyway.
The problem is the steel belts. They have to be removed.
I mean, my recommendation is, is we should find out what liens are on the property, find out, just get a fair idea of what the property is worth and find out whether or not we're gonna be able to recoup any additional liens in our money and the cost of it and the cost of the tires.
We'll get our, we'll get our twenty-four thousand dollars out of it. We're not gonna take the tires off. And that's not our job. We, we, we don't have the right to take tires off. We have the right to sell property.
But that will affect the, the cost, cause whoever's gonna buy it is gonna, I mean, you're going to a, a straight out auction unless you're gonna have a minimum bid. I mean, what happens if it goes for a fire sale? Sometimes these auctions, they do.
Well, if we feel that, if we feel the property is gonna go for, uh, a song, well, we have the right to, submit a bid for twenty-four thousand, one hundred and fifty-eight dollars and take the property for what we're owed. Because we're gonna lose, I mean-
But why would we wanna do that?
Then we're paying for it, right?
Well,
No.
There's a substantial amount of land.
That doesn't make any sense. And we've lost the tax revenue.
There's a substantial amount of land there, it's worth this much money.
I'm confused by why we do that.
There's a lot of land for sale right now also, so the question is.
Without tires on them.
Exactly, so, yeah.
But I would guarantee you any parcel that size you put in-
We have a beautiful building that somebody can buy and no one seems to go wrong.
Questions, how long can we sit on it and not have to sit?
Oh, we have a judgment.
So we can take action whenever we want to.
Let's do some homework on that.
Alright.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn if there's no other business. Hold those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.